I want to make clear that a couple of things. One, this meeting is scheduled to go to five because it's most likely that I will lose the quorum. And two, I take full responsibility of this not being posted for action today. There was some miscommunication. I would have put it on had I had some clear direction to do so, and somehow that didn't come to me. So, I just wanted you to know that. It's my fault. It's no action today. There will be action at the end of tomorrow's formal meeting, taken on whatever we hear today. So. Roll call?
Councilwoman DeCiccia. Councilwoman Gallego.
Here.
Councilwoman Noakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilwoman Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilwoman Waring.
Here.
Mayor Williams.
Here. I ask staff for a brief, brief, brief presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. With me here at the table is Jesus Sapien, Light Rail Administrator, Maria Hyatt, our Street Transportation Director, and Scott Smith, CEO of Valley Metro. Today's meeting is scheduled by Mayor Williams to allow additional city council and community discussion regarding South Central Light Rail project. I'll start with a brief summary on the project's background and I give a brief update about the project's status. So, this project is about serving the needs of the South Central community. We know there's a very high transit need in this area. In this area, transit use is four times higher than the rest of Maricopa County. Ninety-three percent of transit riders in the area walk or bike to access transit. Most South Central residents come from zero car households, and 69% do not possess a driver's license. The residents of South Phoenix will be well-served by connecting light rail to this community. Based on what we've seen happen on the existing light rail line, increased transportation connections result in higher transit ridership and helps get people to and from their jobs and school on a regionally connected rail system. For other extensions, we've observed increased ridership compared to bus routes previously along those same alignments. Throughout the light rail corridor, we've seen light rail boost business activity. The council's been very focused on making sure we're doing all we can to assist businesses through the light rail extension. This project includes a very robust business assistance program devoting significantly more resources than on any previous project. On April 4th, the city council approved an action to allocate 25% more for the city's business assistance program. Added to that is the federal grant, with over a million dollars of that devoted specifically to assisting businesses along South Central. And the final piece is Valley Metro's business assistance program. With all of these, we have at least twice as many resources that will be devoted to the line than previous extensions. We're also starting earlier. With construction scheduled to begin in late 2019, the business assistance program is starting now to be well in front of the construction. In terms of economic development, our metro light rail system has realized a substantial return with more than $10 billion in economic development based on investment of $1.9 billion. This critical transportation project will connect South Phoenix community with the existing regional rail system from downtown Phoenix along Central Avenue to Baseline Road, connecting with nine stations, including a transit center and a park-and-ride. Design is based on seeking to preserve and integrate the existing history and culture and character of the South Central area, which means maintaining existing buildings and businesses to the fullest extent possible. As we've discussed with the council at previous meetings, there's been extensive community outreach on this project that began about six years ago. To date, 380 meetings have taken place with residents, businesses, property owners, community groups, and other stakeholders. As you can see on the slide, a variety of outreach methods have been used in attempts to engage the community as much as possible in those ongoing discussions. In addition, community outreach doesn't simply mean notification and holding public meetings. It's also about being accessible and having accessible locations and times convenient for residents and businesses. It means going to the folks in the community, not making them come to us. And so, for the first time among all of the Valley Metro rail projects, a community office was set up. This office is right on Central Avenue, just north of Rosier. It includes weekend and evening hours. It's an important element of the community outreach for this project. An important element of South Central's background involves action by Phoenix voters. On this slide, you can see the portion of the Proposition 104 ballot that went to voters in August of 2015. On the slide, you see the ballot map showing the proposed light rail extensions throughout the city. Overall, 55% of Phoenix voters approved Proposition 104. And in the South Central area specifically, 75% of the voters approved Proposition 104. As mentioned, this project has seen support and been under development for many years. In the interest of time, I'm not going to cover all of the major milestones that are shown on the slide, but I will cover a few. Nearly 20 years ago, 2000, and then again in 2004, voters passed initiatives supporting transit, including the South Phoenix corridor. In November of 2013, the Phoenix City Council approved the South Central Light Rail alignment. And then in 2014, a year later, the Phoenix City Council approved the two-lane configuration and the location of all of the stations that have been identified. Further along in the milestones, just a couple of months ago, there was a response by the city council to petition on the four lanes and a request to suspend. That was addressed in April of this year. And then upcoming is a deadline to submit for the federal engineering phase. This is a very important deadline that must be met in the federal process, that we've got to enter into the engineering phase, or if that doesn't happen at this point, then the project will be removed from the federal process and need to start all over. And so, this is necessary for us to get into the engineering phase, where I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second. And then, once that happens, we can submit for full federal funding. The reason the funding is so important and the federal discussion is so important, because as you can see on this slide, $600 million toward this project comes from federal grant funding. That funding is only available if the project happens. If that project doesn't happen, that funding would be reallocated somewhere in the country for a different rail project. The other portion of the funding is regional Proposition 400 funding, which is $150 million of the funding for this project. That fund is allocated strictly for regional rail projects. And so, if this project isn't realized, that project would still need to go toward a regional rail project. And then finally, the last piece is the T-2050 of the Proposition 400, $104 of about $200 million. And that was allocated to support the plan that was shown on the ballot for Proposition This just shows a view of what I mentioned a minute ago of the phases, the major phases of the federal process. We are currently in the project development phase and concluding that phase of the project and about to enter into the engineering, and we're right at the deadline to do so. So, as I mentioned, July 31st is the deadline for us to submit so that we can enter into the engineering phase, gives time for the Federal Transit Administration to do their review by November, which is the deadline that we have to enter into that phase. And then after that comes a full funding grant agreement request, and construction can begin. The overall project schedule shows here, we're in the design phase, which is happening through 2019. Construction on the project is scheduled and planned to begin in late calendar year And so, that concludes the presentation for the council. We are here to answer any questions you may have.
Do any members of the council have a question?
Mayor?
Councilman Noakowski's first, then you.
Thank you very much.
My question is, why not four lanes? That's been one thing that the community's been asking for, the business owners, residents, and that's the question that hasn't been answered yet. Why not four lanes?
So, Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, there's been quite extensive discussion going back to the 2013 process that we talked about. Back in 2013, the city council approved the alignment for light rail, but asked that within, that the next step be an analysis of the roadway configuration in addition to the station locations identification. And so, that analysis was done, worked with the community, working group was done along South Central, and it was brought back to the city council at that time, went through the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee, brought back to city council, decision was made to do two lanes at that time. And at that point, that kicked off also the environmental process. The environmental process for the federal process began, and it was based on that configuration of two lanes. The other part of your question in terms of why does it work, it has a lot to do really with the spacing of South Central and the way that South Central Avenue is set up. As we talked about two months ago, when this item was before the council, when there was a petition request, the setup of Central Avenue is, there's limited right-of-way along Central Avenue. A lot of the buildings are right up front, at the front of the property, right at the sidewalk. There's some old, very old sidewalks that are very narrow, and when we go in there and make any changes to infrastructure, they've got to be updated in compliance with the American Disabilities Act. And so, there's a number of factors that play into this. One of the things we showed was, could four lanes go in there? And one of the things we showed two months ago was some photos of if you had two 10-foot lanes side by side, or if we squeezed two 10-foot lanes in, and that would likely cause some safety issues and some traffic issues. And I can have Maria Hyatt get expounded a little bit more on that aspect.
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, at the meeting in April when we were responding to the petition, we showed some pictures, because pictures are the best way to tell the story. We laid out two 10-foot lanes and then walked through. We put a bus and a truck, both of which you see a lot of on Central Avenue, to show what that interaction would be. And a bus with mirrors is about 10 and 1/2 feet wide, and a truck with mirrors is about 10 and 1/2 feet wide. So, we had conflicts between those mirrors. And that is taking every bit of the lane that we laid out there. One of the things that we also talked about back in April was what happens in a street? So, if you picture the curb, and then you see that gutter, that's about a foot and a half right there. And so, vehicles tend not to drive on that line where the asphalt meets that concrete curb because it's uncomfortable. Your car kind of does the jerky move on it. It's just not as smooth, so they shy away from it. So, they're more than a foot and a half away from the sidewalk at that point in time. So, our analysis was based on those conditions. It is not a safe condition to have two 10-foot lanes on Central Avenue.
So, on Central Avenue on the north side of the river, there's not an area where there's actually that scenario you just painted right now, without the bicycle lanes?
Councilman Noakowski, I'm not aware of one, but we can certainly come back and verify that with you.
Well, I can tell you there is.
Okay.
And I can tell you that there is about 85 to 90 feet of crossing between sidewalk to sidewalk. And I can tell you that in South Phoenix, the average is about 80 feet. So, you can give and take about three feet from each side. You can get rid of the bicycle lane that, a lot of people say that they can actually use a second lane, car lane, as a shared bicycle vehicle lane. So, I think that we haven't done our homework. The other thing is, on April 19, 2017, at that time, Vice Mayor Pastor asked for a traffic study. Basically, we got this piece of paper back on a year later. It took a whole year. And this study was done in 2015. It wasn't done after the vice mayor asked for a transportation study. And according to the minutes of that meeting, Mr. Smith said, "In addition to the traffic study, was a detailed review of the impact this design would have on businesses and access." So, I'm still waiting for that study of the impact on the businesses and access. Mr. Smith, where is that study? We haven't received it in my office. I'm not sure if any of my colleagues have received it. I'm not sure if the vice mayor at that time, Laura Pastor, have you received it?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, we did, there was a study done after that meeting, traffic study, and was distributed to all the council offices. We would need to go back and look at exactly when it was distributed, but it was distributed to each of the council offices, I think, within the last few months. It wasn't that paper that you referred to. That paper that you referred to was a previous presentation that we had done, and the updated study came after, came after that. And it was done in response to the council request.
Mr. City Manager, I can tell you that our office has not received it. This is actually in my district, part of it. The other part is in District 8. I'm not sure if they received it, but we haven't received anything like that. My chief of staff, I'm not sure if you're here, Fentecita, if you've received it, but I can tell you that we haven't received it at this time. The other thing is, that whole business access, Mr. Smith, that you talked about back in April 19, 2017, I haven't received that study neither.
Mayor, councilmember, I don't remember exactly what was said, but I think what we were referring to is that at each time, at that time, we were going over with every business who had a question as to how this development would impact their access, and we were meeting one-on-one with the business owners and the property owners to determine their access and adjusting accordingly. At that time, we were having numerous meetings, especially down in the industrial area around Victory Lane and places like that, where we discussed how semi-trucks could ingress, egress, the role of roundabouts. So, you know, once again, I'm not sure that we were, there was an actual study I was referring to, other than we were looking at and studying every single access and how it impacted every single business, especially those businesses that raised specific questions. Part of those 380 meetings that were held over the last few years were with individual businesses. There were many that had specific questions about how this development would impact the access to their business, and everyone who came forward with a question was either, we either met with, with our engineers, with our planners, and others to make sure that their questions were answered.
Going back to that response, Mr. Smith, you actually said that in your guys' report back in, let me see when this report was given to us, April 4th, 2018, just a couple of months ago, that 2012 public meetings, Tier One, public meetings, that June 5th, 2012, according to your guys' numbers that you gave to the council members, that there was only 13 individuals that attended that meeting. Is that correct?
Councilman, I have the report in front of me, so I don't, I couldn't tell you.
I can read the report if you'd like to look.
Well, if the report says that, it says that.
Okay. And then, the report also says that there was a second meeting in 2012, that was a public meeting, that June 7th, 2012, just a couple days later, 18 individuals attended that meeting. And the majority of the conversation was talking about alternate modes of alignment and transportation. So, one of the things they talked about, and one of the individuals that was at that meeting said that they were talking about the trolley, if there should be a trolley, a bus, or light rail. That those 13 individuals said that it should be light rail, that we should improve our bus system and the trolley. They think it's better having the light rail connecting to the existing light rail. So, seeing that there was such a low turnout, wouldn't you agree with me, 13 and 18 individuals from that whole six miles of light rail is a low turnout?
Would it be a low turnout?
Right.
I'm not sure, because I don't know how many people were interested at that time. I don't know what the advertising was like, or even. This was part of what was called the alternative analysis. And the reason why those different modes were discussed is as part of a formal process that took place in 2012 and 2013. There was a dual study that went on, which discussed the different modes of transit and also the alignment. These were open to anyone who wanted to come. I can't talk about who decided to come and who did not decide to come. We can talk about, did people have the opportunity to come? We know there were over 20,000 door hangers hung during this two-year period. There were multiple newspaper ads. There were other things that came up. You know, I don't, I don't know if that's low or not, because I've been to the other public meetings where there was 150 people at the meeting, others where there were 15. It varies by meeting. I can tell you that during that time, there was at least seven different routes analyzed during, as to how to go from downtown to Baseline Road. There were all the different modes that you mentioned that were looked at. And there were more than just those two meetings. There was a myriad and a variety of meetings. I know that the Federal Transit Administration looks very carefully on public outreach, and they have very strict standards as to what you do and what you, and what you, what process you go through. Valley Metro and the city of Phoenix submitted that process, and whatever process it was, I wasn't around at the time. I can only look at the documentation as you have. The Federal Transit Administration believed that it met the qualifications of the federal government for public outreach, and...
The other question I have is that, basically, there was a community working group that was formed. Who picked that group? Does anybody know who actually chose those individuals to sit on that group in 2013, community working group?
Councilman, that's something that I think, between the four of us, none of us were involved in the project at that point, so we would need to go back and take a look at exactly how that group was set up, and so we can get back to you on that question.
And the other thing is that in 2013, according to this document you gave the council back in April, that you had one-on-one meetings with business owners. According to the sign-in sheet, and the business is quoted here, there was only one, two, three, four, five businesses that you actually met with in 2013, according to this document that you've given us back in April. I don't believe that meeting one-on-one with five businesses is enough for a six-mile metro light rail to go through a community and not have the input of those individuals that actually have businesses and that are stakeholders along that light rail. In 2013, you had eight events within the community that you guys attended, from the South Mountain Fun Fest, to the Thanksgiving festivals, to other things that were included as meeting with the community. In 2013, the public meeting, Tier Two, basically, there was two meetings. During those two meetings, one was set up for March 6th. There was 24 individuals, so there was an increase of attendance. We had 24 individuals. The following day, March 7th of 2013, this Tier Two process, we had 11 individuals show up to really decide on what the light rail and individuals wanted in South Phoenix. So, seeing this, it was a poor turnout. I'm not sure if we really did the outreach that we said we did, and this concerns me as a council member, because when I'm up here taking votes, I rely on staff's recommendation, hearing that there was over 300 meetings with the community, and finding out that these types of statistics scares me. And then, all of a sudden, on right around President's Day, I get some of the owners of businesses saying, hey, I'm going to close my business. McDonald's has been around for over 20 years, that has a Thanksgiving breakfast every Thanksgiving day and feeds thousands of poor families in South Phoenix. He decided to close doors because he found out that there's going to be two lanes instead of four lanes. Councilman, he told me, if there is four lanes, I would keep my business open. Seeing that there's only going to be two lanes, I need to close it. I had the same situation happen to me on 24th Street between Washington and Jefferson. I'm not going to have this happen again. Then, a person that owned Rancho Market, same situation. They sold it to an investor out of Los Angeles, same situation. If it was four lanes, we would keep it open, but seeing that there's going to be two lanes, there's no way that we can survive. Nobody talked to us with the Rancho people. Nobody talked to us. There was no one-on-ones. With the McDonald's, there was, but with the Rancho Market, there wasn't. Then, all of a sudden, I said, what can I do to make sure that this project happens? I'm for the light rail. I'm for light rail in South Phoenix, because I believe it's going to be something good for our community. But what I'm against is the outreach process, making sure that people have an input of what's going on within their community, what's going on outside of their businesses, and how it's going to affect it. And as I see right now, your guys' notes, your guys' numbers, something wrong happened here. Then, all of a sudden, on Tuesday, the following week, I asked Chris Mackey from our Economic Development Director to send out a letter to all the stakeholders within District 7, my district, along the light rail. To my surprise, four days later, at the meeting, which you were there, Mario, there's over 50 people there. I was expecting probably five or so, and the common theme was, I was never notified. I owned this business for 50 years, and I have never been notified. I knew about the light rail because I voted for Prop 400. I supported it, but nobody has come in front of my business, to my business, and talked to me about the two lanes. I'm all for four lanes, but I'm not for the two lanes. So, that bothers me. You have individuals that are supportive of the project, but they're not supportive of the two lanes, how it's going to affect their business. At that same meeting, residents just a block away from where the meeting was being held on Alta Vista and Third Street are three blocks that are landlocked. They said, "Councilman, if emergency vehicle wants to get through, and there happens to be a funeral going on, because there happens to be two funeral parlors along Central Avenue, what happens? How can an ambulance get around a funeral? How can an ambulance or a fire truck get around an accident that happens on a one-lane?" I go, "That's a good question. Let me find out." Just a few, what was it, about three months ago or so, Mario, myself, and you, and Jesus, we drove out there to see if that was true or not. It is true. There are three blocks that are landlocked. There's no way out to Alta Vista, no way out to Seventh Street. If somebody has a heart attack, if somebody drowns, and there happens to be an accident or a funeral procession, or something blocked on Central Avenue, how are we going to get those emergency vehicles to save those people's lives? We're not. That's what's wrong with this process. We should have known that back in 2012. We would never have allowed this to happen, and that's what gets me angry, that we're treating people from south of the river different than we would treat people on the north side of the river. That's sad.
Councilman?
Sorry, one more second, and I'll, and I believe that this is why we're having this hearing, is to make sure that everybody has a fair share. Everybody has a vested interest of what's going on along South Central. I believe in the light rail, but I believe that everybody should have a vested interest in talking about what they like to see and what their dreams are for this light rail project. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman DeCiccia, was that you that asked to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor, thank you, and I apologize for being here telephonically. This was, I already had a planned event, and, but I'm making sure I'm here. I've got a couple of questions of staff, if I could. I'd like to start off with, the meeting today, it was called quickly. Is this a formal meeting? Is it a policy meeting? What is today considered?
I can answer that question. I heard from Councilman Noakowski, there was a large group, as long as, as well as Brian Jeffries, and I said I will give them an opportunity for the council to listen to them, let's schedule a meeting. So, I guess I'm the one that called for it.
Well, it's not that, but I'm asking, I'm asking what's called for. Is this a policy meeting today, or is this a formal meeting today?
It's neither. It's an informational meeting that I asked so that we could hear people speak that are most affected.
Okay. Well, Mayor, we had this conversation earlier today, too. And this is an embarrassment to the city of Phoenix, but it also shows how these individuals are being victimized once again. This meeting was supposed to be, if you look at the letter that was dated... This meeting was supposed to be, if you look at the letter that was dated June 11th, sent to the city manager, the city management team, for action and for a hearing. And now we have another meeting tomorrow. I don't know if the public's even aware of this.
I did announce it at the beginning, and I take full, I announced it at the beginning of this meeting, and I take full responsibility that it was not posted for action.
Correct. Thank you, Mayor, for that, but I'd like to know, who made the, the decision from staff to put this on as a discussion only, rather than wasting everybody's time? Who did that, who made that decision?
I did.
The change, you, you changed it, Mayor?
I made the decision. I wasn't aware that the intent of the council was to have an action item on this today. I did not get clear information on that.
So you did not receive any information from staff as to what the request was today, correct?
Well, there was some confusion over, let's put it that way.
Well, the letter was very clear, Mayor. I just want to make sure, I want to look, see, government loves to talk a lot, but I want to make sure that it also accepts responsibility when it's wrong. And I appreciate the fact that you apologized, but I want to know, who made the decision not to make this an action item, and that these individuals that have driven all this way, taken time off from their work, taken time away from their families, now have to come again tomorrow for an action item? I want to know, who made that decision not to do this, and where did that communication breakdown occur? If it did?
Well, I made the final decision, Councilman, so...
Agreed.
I accept the responsibility. I, I don't know all the transpired...
Today was the first day you saw, sorry.
And I have just know that, I received a memo today. It was shown to me that the action item would be placed on tomorrow's agenda, and I said that was perfectly all right. I would have put it on today had I been aware that that's what the council wanted.
Well, um...
The first time you saw the letter, I'm sorry, uh, I'm going to yield.
You know, I, I know that you, you really want to talk, but this meeting's to listen, and, and I don't want to argue over this stuff.
But it's important.
I'd rather hear what they have to say.
It does, but it also shows the lack of communication at the City of Phoenix, the lack of help from the city management team. When they want to contrive a vote, this is how they do it. These are, these people have been victimized already. Now you're going to be victimizing them again? You have, if it was not caught, and the letter was the first time you saw that, you know, this is a disgrace, and it's an embarrassment for the City of Phoenix, and I think Laura, Mrs. Councilman Pastor would like to get in, and I'd like to yield a small part of my time to her on that, but I'd like to be able to come back, because I've got multiple questions I've got to ask here.
Well, we're 40 minutes into this meeting, and I don't want to deny people, because I'm afraid we'll lose the quorum, but I don't want to tell you...
Well, Mayor, these people, these people were mistreated.
Councilman? Councilman, settle down. I, I'm willing to listen to you, but you just conceded some time to, to Councilwoman, and she has a letter in her hand, she wants to do it.
Well, I said I'm willing to do that. Mayor, if you want to cut me off, I think that's very disrespectful to do that. I think it's wrong to do that, because I've got a series of questions I would like to ask staff from their presentation, and why we were, as council members, denied specific information, and why we, as council members, were not able to have this be done correctly. Now the individuals have to come back again, and, and people up there with a straight face are going to be able to say that they were treated fairly? That is so morally wrong, Mayor.
I understand your point, and, but are you listening?
I am.
I accepted responsibility. I also question, this was posted on Friday, why did no one call me when there was still time to say, could you put it for action? And no one did. So don't lay all that wine.
No, Mayor, if you look at it that way...
Do you not read your packets? I'm not going to argue the point.
Well, no, we read it. No, we read it. Why do you think we had to take an action item today, Councilman Pastor, Councilman Noakowski, and myself had to personally go out there and put it on the agenda for tomorrow? Why do you think that that had to happen? The reason it had to happen is because these individuals were going to be treated wrongly again. They were not going to be given the opportunity to give their time in order to assess their businesses. So I've got a series of questions I would like to ask here, and like to have the ability to do that without being cut off.
If you ask your questions, you are cutting into the time for all these people to speak.
Well, because my questions are very simple, because I want the city manager, because of the level of incompetence he has had and showed on this, and the way he's disrespected these individuals in South Phoenix, if this was occurring in North Phoenix, they got two lanes in each direction. We're not talking about two lanes. We're talking about one lane in each direction. That's what we're talking about today. The city manager has allowed this to happen. He's deprived the council members that have issues with this vital information. If we cannot get information in a timely manner, and information that's being provided to others, how do you expect the public to get that type of information? It is morally wrong what happened to these individuals. It's wrong for it to be one lane in each direction, wrong for that to happen, and I'm asking Ed Zirker, on July 5th, I would like you to place your job on the line for a vote...
I don't believe that's on this agenda. You ruled out of order, Sal.
Okay, but that's what should occur here. The city manager has done this purposely. He's gone behind people's backs. He has purposely created a management...
Councilman, that you are out of order. Councilman Waring?
Mayor, you're right.
No, I'm going to Councilman Waring. He has a question.
Councilman Pastor.
Oh, Councilman Past, Councilman Pastor.
Thank you for cutting me off, Mayor.
You're welcome.
There's no reason for me to, I'm telling you, you, it's very disrespectful what you're doing here today. Very disrespectful.
Sal, may I, may I suggest something? Tomorrow, there, it's on the agenda, and there's a, on the agenda, the agenda for possible action or action. So may I suggest that we listen to the audience, and we have an opportunity tomorrow then to, we have an opportunity today to submit our questions and get them answered, so that we're ready and prepared for tomorrow. But that would be my suggestion. You can take it or leave it, but I'm going to, I'm going to put something on the record. June 12th, 2018, it says, Dear Councilwoman Pastor, pursuant to the request from Mayor Williams duly received and filed June 11th, 2018, notice is hereby given to you that a special meeting of council of the City of Phoenix is called for Tuesday, June 19th, 2018, at 3:00 PM, located in the City Council Chambers, 200 West Jefferson Street, Phoenix, Arizona. This meeting will be held for the purpose of discussion and possible action related to South Central Light Rail. Sincerely, Chris Meyer, City Clerk. So we, everybody received this, just like, and sometimes we get it, sometimes we don't, but it was set up and designed for possible action. It was this morning that then I got my minutes or my notes, and then Tuesday, June 19th, it states, information and discussion. So I think that's where the miscommunication is happening, because it was called for possible action. It did change to discussion, and now it's back tomorrow for action. So I think that's what's the struggle we're having right now, but I would like to yield, really, a lot of the time to the citizens that are here, so we can hear them, and then have a robust discussion tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilman Pastor.
Councilman Waring?
Thank you. So just in light of Sal's comments and, and action, and what's going to happen tomorrow. So the city manager and I had talked about this a couple of weeks ago, kind of what's possible. So I'm anti-light rail. I just, I don't think it's a very useful tool in the toolbox, so to speak. It's really expensive for what you get. It doesn't move that many people. Having said that, and having said that, I obviously voted against this project in 2014, but it did go to the voters, and it did pass. Small, off-year August election, when I think 21% of the people turned out, so I'm not surprised that people didn't really go to these meetings either. Keep in mind that the two districts in this brackets have 200,000 people each, and they got 11 people and 24 people and so forth. So if, if you went around and put out door hangers, and you didn't actually talk to anybody when you put out the door hangers, as a guy who's hung his share of door hangers campaigning, unless you knock and actually meet the person and explain who you are, nobody cares about the door hangers, just FYI. So that might have something to do with how this went as well. It gets covered by pizza, door hangers, and everything else, so you might want to try your messaging a little different in the future. We could not do this. It would probably cost us some money, is my understanding, but we would have to send something to the ballot. So we're voting on this potentially tomorrow. If the council wanted to get rid of the south line of the light rail, they could, they can't do it unilaterally. We cannot do it unilaterally, but I'm asking this of the city manager, but we have time to send something to the ballot in November. Basically, we would have to vote on something by the 27th, at our meeting on the 27th, although I think we're voting on this tomorrow. They would get, the staff would get the language prepared. We would vote on July 5th, at the latest, to send something to November ballot, and that is possible, corrected?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and just in terms of dates, I'll ask the city clerk to talk through that. You mean, you've summarized it, but if you want the specific date verification, I defer to the city clerk, but I think you've summarized our conversation correctly.
Please, Chris.
Goes.
Well, is that, is that true? By July 5th, we would have to have language, and we've got, really, if you count tomorrow, we've got two meetings in between now and July 5th, so we've got a little time to work out the details. So it is possible to not do this light rail extension, correct?
Based on standard procedure, it's actually July 9th, but your last meeting is scheduled as July 5th.
We could do a special meeting on the 9th, but that wouldn't be necessary if we got our act together. So it is possible, for those of you who don't want to do this, you're doing the right thing, coming and petitioning your government, it can be changed. We can't unilaterally change it. Ed, you and I had a discussion, in fact, I've discussed, I see at least one of the members of the Transportation Committee here, Sparky Smith, and I know I've discussed this with Roy Miller, who I think is one of Sal's appointees, et cetera. We can't unilaterally take, I think of the $31 billion, is it about $8 billion, is light rail related?
That, that sounds approximately.
About right. So, so $8 billion of the $31 billion. Only $1 billion for fixing streets, $8 billion of the $31 for light rail, but we can't just get rid of the $8 billion and move it over to streets on our own. We'd have to send something to the voters, whatever the $8 billion's left, we'd have to do, do it that way, but...
Just to be clear on the numbers, I think the $31 billion is a comprehensive number, which includes federal money. I don't, I looked at Mario about what the, what the Transportation 2050 money itself is less than that, but if that's an important detail, we can get that.
But I think about $8 billion is the investment in light rail.
Which would include federal money as well as the local.
Right. But that's, I mean, it's a big ticket item.
It's a, it's a large item, yes.
But we could, within the margins, is my understanding, so I'm going to ask for a discussion about this at our next executive session. What can we do without going to voters in terms of moving some of the money around? And what is our option for delaying? I saw the deadlines up there, and again, I'm someone who's against light rail, so, you know, I've got my own biases here, but, but it is possible to either kill it by delaying, or it's possible to kill it by voters killing it, or it's possible to at least shift some of the money, potentially, and we need, I guess, the legal analysis of that. So I'd like that legal analysis to, to happen at the executive session. I just thought it would be helpful for people in the audience to understand what's possible, what we could do, and what we can't. Thank you for the time, Mayor, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Now we will get to the audience. I apologize for the delay. I'm asking everyone to stick to two minutes. Two people can donate to the third, as a speaker representing you, and I need the cards. Okay, I have four, neutral, and opposed, and I'm going to go every other one as much as I can. Jimmy Cluff, you're up first.
Mayor, I think the, the four lanes, no train, there's an individual here that has like a three-minute, is it?
Oh.
PowerPoint presentation, that would cut, kind of cut a lot of the individuals...
Okay, could you bring it down? Is it, do you need to put it on the screen? I'm talking to the other lady right behind you who has a PowerPoint.
Yes, ma'am, we already provide the...
Oh, they have it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then, let's do that, please.
Do you want to listen to the gentleman first? He's already here.
I can, he's, he's right there, go ahead, and then we'll do your PowerPoint.
Okay, hello, my name's Jimmy Cluff. I'm a resident of South Phoenix, not involved with any businesses, except that we use the businesses of South Phoenix. There's three generations of my family that live in three different homes, each within a quarter mile of Central Avenue. We are all against light rail. I just want to make it clear that we were not notified in any way that anyone in my family knows of, anything to vote on about the light rail. We were never told any details, thank you, sir. We weren't told anything, especially the details that we know now, of the, of the two lanes and the way that's going to push out some of the businesses. I personally use public transportation, and I think the bus system that we have in place is great. It could be improved upon. It would increase my walking time and distance to have the light rail down there personally. Also, the, the safety issue that Councilman Noakowski pointed out is, is a huge concern of ours. Those are our two, our two biggest points, the sa, the safety, and then we weren't notified to put our vote in. We weren't at those meetings because we didn't know about them. So if we could do the pause, we're open to other options, moving it, doing the four lanes. Right now, we really want at least the pause, and overall, we are opposed to the train. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, that'll be the PowerPoint.
Good afternoon, everyone, Mayor, and Councilmen, Councilwoman. We're not political people, we are regular people. If you can feel my legs, it's shaking everywhere, but somebody needs to do this, and, Councilme. First of all, I want to tell the Valley Metro people, in the last year in April, Julie Cruz come in and told me, then, make an appointment for come, at my business, talking to me face to face, and at this moment, I'm waiting for this appointment. How can I use this? I don't know how to use it.
Somebody go help her.
Secondly, secondly, Valley Metro said, and you barely have a listing for the businesses. I, I make my job, I'm close my doors of my business, and I lose a lot of money, a lot of time in my business for going knock the doors of every single business, and this is my listing for every single business. How you cannot do this? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. So first of all, we want to talk in about the vote. We receive so many excuses for stop this situation in the South Phoenix. We want to mention it, then, when the Proposition 104 coming in the 2015, we're lack of knowledge about the process, about the design. So the voters voting with lack of knowledge, and any part, they show us, the Central Avenue coming and converted into lane traffic. This is why you receive a lot of voters, because probably the light rail is going to be improved in South Phoenix, but not with this design. This is the map, then, you provided in the Proposition 104, and you can see only beautiful colors showing the, the streets, but not in, in, in detail how it looks our Central Avenue. And we don't believe the voters voting with the totally of the information about this proposition. We don't want the light rail if they're coming with this design for one-lane traffic only. In the beginning, we're not against the light rail, and still not, but with the design, we are against the design of the light rail. But you know already, the Central Avenue coming into late since the 2013, how you hiding this important information in the 2015, when you have the information already in the 2013? You already in the 2013, you have the totally information about the, the redaction of the lanes in Central Avenue. Why are you hiding? What is the principal purpose for make this design? What is your, your thoughts? What you don't share with the community, with the voters, your, your, the information that you already have two years before to the Proposition 104? And this document provided for the Valley Metro, they told us, then, in the spring and summer of the 2013, you make... summer of the 2013, you make meetings with a certain amount of representatives of local businesses, local residents, nonprofit community, educational institution, chambers on commerce and faith. These group of people decide, make the Central Avenue in two lane. Only 15 association or nonprofit organization make the decision who impact a lot of people, a lot of community in South Phoenix. They're make the decision for make the lane configuration, the station, and all the rest of the project. This is the places when you meet, and if you can see in detail the places where you meet, it's some of those festivals and park and recreation, where you cannot have a proper and serious conversation to make the decision for impact the whole community, namely South Phoenix. If we analyze the members of this group, which is 15, we have a some conflict of interestings, because one, four of these members, they are associates of the government. They don't have a free, they need a vote in favor to the government, because they depending to the government, they are interconnecting with the government. We can, we have only one resident. How is possible one resident represent thousands of residents? It's not proportional, it's not a percent proportional for represent the whole entire South Phoenix, one resident only. We can see it here, the hope for, it's a public and Indian houses, they're depending for the US Department of Housing. This is conflict of interestings. This is the people who take the decision to impact the South Phoenix. The Phoenix Community Alliance is an organization creator for get a stronger downtown, not South Phoenix. We need people who represent South Phoenix, not the downtown. We're not the downtown, we are the South Phoenix. We have the YMCA participate in this 15 group, naming community working group, and it's already closed. They have at least four years closed. How do you can put in the table to participate with a really important decision, a people who is not be there right now? It's closed already. We have the Outburn Center. This is part of the City of Phoenix. And actually, we discovered, and then, the City of Phoenix and the federal government, they make this project named South River Bridge Outburn, without the community, and the same process than we are right now. You choose a little group of people, you close the door, and you make the decision for make the Outburn Center, without the community. The South Phoenix community, we don't know about this project when they're making it. You expended more than $100 million to make this project without the community. We don't have a lake. This South River Bridge is so salty, they need not even have a water. We don't have any water, only trees, only, you know, birds, and we don't use it. You make those kind of projects for South Phoenix, then we cannot be emotional to use it, and you expended $100 million in one project, and the same process than we are right now, just a little people decided for our community. This is the progress that you bring to our community, always a failed project. Remax, Victor Vidalis, is one of the participators of these 15 group members. He's a Realtor, oh, nice, selling properties, good. When the construction coming, and the whole business is gone, because they can support the businesses, they're close the doors, and then Victor Vidalis coming, and all the people who buy and sell properties, they make his business successful.
Excuse me, Mayor, it is not appropriate to attack individual citizens for being involved in a political process.
I'm not attacking individuals. He put his name in this listing, and I'm present only, what are thoughts? And you have to listen, because you never wants to listen us.
No more.
Yes. Actually, the South Mountain Village Planning Committee is the same thing, it's part of the City of Phoenix. So then, the three businesses only participate in this group. The other two businesses, we have the letters, then we already presented to you, then they denied it. Lola Chickens and Waffle, they say, I never be in this group, I never participate in this group, this is a lie. Preston Funeral and Home, they say, stop to use my name, I never be in favor to the light rail. So we can see how failure is this group. Now, Ballet Metro say to the community, then he make the proper resource for include the community, he hang on 1,200 door handles. Well, I can tell you, the Ballet Metro, then the businesses, with his own money, they're making the resource for include the community. We cooperate money, the whole businesses, for make these postcards, and send it to 12,300 residents in between Seven Avenue, Seventh Street, Jefferson, to the South Mountain, to the Mountain. So how can the Ballet Metro only hang it out 2,000 door handlers, when the businesses make the job, then he needs to make it? We send it, because we don't want you pointing us, like a handful business owners and property business against the light rail. We want to hear the community. We don't want to manipulate nobody, but we want to hear the community. We want to know if the community is okay, or is against, or what is the thoughts of the community in regard into the light rail? So we make those kind of signs, and we put it around the Central Avenue, for make the community forum and include the community. And then, this is the whole expenses that we make, because we send it a postcard, door-to-door mail, to every single one of the houses in between Seven Avenue, Seventh Street, through Jefferson, and the Mountain. How can the Ballet Metro can do it? How can the Ballet Metro tell us, then, they're bring the community, when they have only 15 people, four businesses, and they don't have a numbers?
Excuse me, how much is that? I can't see it.
Well, we expended at this time around, in between 12,000 to $15,000 to include the community. Because actually, we need to pay the City of Phoenix for use the facilities, who's supposed to be in favor to the community. This is the receipt, then we pay the City of Phoenix. Actually, they don't want to renting to me, I have to threaten them with the media. This is the way that I found it for the City of Phoenix renting to me the facility. I can prove it here with these pictures, how the community reaction when you involve the community, when you really wants to hear the community, when you want to listen the different comments, then the community wants to say it. We have packed this place, the place capacity is 200 people, and we almost double it, the capacity. We invite you, the councilmen, councilwomen, and the mayor, and nobody attended, except Michael Nowakowski, one representative of South DCO office, and one representative for Lourdes Pastor. All the rest don't come in. How you can pretend to listen to us if you don't come in? We know you have a busy agenda, but sometimes you have to put it away for listen the community, because the community is the one who put in these shares.
Please, please. We have other people, please, go ahead.
I have a lot of people who donate me to his time.
No, I'm talking to them.
Okay. I'm sorry, Ms. William. We see this image in the same study who presented the Ballet Metro to us. I guess, and this is the construction per mile for the light rail, isn't it? One of the representatives of the Ballet Metro can tell me what is about $60 to $80 million per mile, it is the maintenance, or it is the construction?
So Jesus, would that be the construction costs, or what is that?
Mayor, councilmember, I'll have to defer to Ballet Metro on what went into this number, without knowing, I believe this is a report from 2013, so we would want them to look into what factors went into that number.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a bunch of questions for you, Ballet Metro, and you don't have any, we have a lot of questions for you, and you don't have any answer. You always say we need investigate, we're not the force, then we be there in this process, but you coming at this meeting for answer our questions, not for make an excuses.
That's a capital cost, that's the cost to build, okay? Cost to build.
Okay, it's a cost. So we have these numbers, then, you asking 704 million dollars for the construction, if we divided in the form for eight miles, we can cost $146 million per mile. But actually, in the bottom part, you barely can see the yellow highlighting, they said, the project include track improvement along McKinley Street and downtown. Isn't that that light rail construction is barely new for already make improvements? What are you doing? How you explain it as, supposed to be the construction improvement has to be every 10 years? What, that soon? Plus, actually, they said you need, they cover operation and maintenance for the center. Then the light rail pay herself to survive, or we need like taxpayers pay for the light rail? I know the fair, it's only covering between 25% to 35% of the cost of maintenance. We don't want to pay our packets with the taxes, these maintenance, they're not sustainable. Recently, we see a note, and the security of the light rail, they're going to one station and checking the tickets, and the majority of the people there are arrested, because they don't have a ticket. So how can we pretend to holding this amount of money for the light rail pay himself, and not the taxpayer payer? Plus, actually, you know, it's a lot of crime on it. This is the statistics for the City of Phoenix Police Department, then they told us how increased the phone calls of the police. We put a lot of stress in our Phoenix Police Department. We put a lot of stress in these people who wants to attend the citizens, just because the light rail. And one of the station, their upgrade, the phone calls to the City of Phoenix, 73%. The most lower one is 38%. It is not possible, the City of Phoenix Police Department are human people. We cannot over stress these people. We only a project who don't pay herself, don't maintenance herself. This is another picture, then, we want to show you, councilman, councilwoman, and mayor. We see there the supposed to emergency pictures. We see the bus and the firefighter car passing in the one lane, plus one bicycle lane. How we can, how you can explain it? You don't have the space for make the four lanes? If you see there, a big car like a firefighter department with another regular car, and there's possible, because if you present it, it's possible. This is a real emergency. Then I catch it in front to my business, you can see the firefighter department cross his car in more than one lane. So it's not possible, these pictures, then the light rail presented it, represent the real emergency, because this is a picture for the real emergency. You can see it, then they're cover more than one lane, the firefighter department. Actually, we want to notice, then, in these pictures, and the side of the light rail, you have a big spaces empty, then we can use it. And this is the pictures in the downtown, how you don't get the whole entire space to make the lanes, and just make reduction lanes. We want to talking about this, Ms. Kay Gallego. Ms. Kay Gallego, she invite the whole businesses in South Phoenix to come in and talking to Ms. Gallego, for give it to us the whole information about the help, then we can receive it like a businesses. The whole entire room is full of City of Phoenix employment, and Ballet Metro, and actually, the four organizations who received the $2.4 million. We only appear like around six businesses, no more. We hear Ms. Gallego respectfully for around one hour. When is our time? Because in the agenda, she put questions and comments for us, and we can participate, we started to make a question and said, give it to us an example, how you can help us? She never give it to us any example, she never can answer any question, and when she frustrated, she cut the meeting and say, thank you for coming, and goodbye. She don't listen to us.
Praise, praise.
I'm barely finished, Ms. Elda, I'm barely finished. I appreciate your patience, but I think it's important we can express ourselves.
I'm not test facing you.
Yes. We wanted to get the attention of Ms. William, councilman and councilwoman, for the stop this situation. You continue to expending money everywhere, every single association, they not even have a clue with us. Or association who tell us how make Facebook pages, webpages, with one free year, GoDaddy, or bookkeeping classes, we know that, we don't need that. Stop to expend money. Ballet Metro, when they see us, our community forum, and they see us, is going to be successful, they make a Ballet Metro celebration, because the light rail coming to South Phoenix, they don't want to hear our voices, they don't want to pay attention, then we don't wanted that design. And those to continue to make those kind of activities, then celebrate. But unfortunately for the Ballet Metro, only two people coming. I don't know where you are, all these green teachers, when they make the celebration of the Ballet Metro, South Phoenix coming. I don't see you, I don't think you are residents of South Phoenix. It's a guessing who bring it to you.
Praise, praise, praise.
This is, we step in front to the Ballet Metro office, and we see only two people coming to that celebration. Instead, we protest, we make our party in front to them, and we protest against the light rail design. Nobody coming to his celebration, nobody wants to appear, any one of these green teachers and any other resident, only two residents coming. So it's clear the message of the South Phoenix community, we need your attention, like our governors. We need to stop this situation, and think about in the community, and re-study the light rail, if it's possible, bring it to the Central Avenue, or you can use another alternative street, like a Seven Avenue is wider, they don't have sidewalks, they don't have a proper light. We need the progress, but in the proper way. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much.
I really want to give it to you.
Please.
And Fran, these petitions is more than 5,000 people who rejected this process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, it was well done. Victor Vidalis? Followed by Tommy Espinoza?
Good afternoon, Mayor Williams, council. My name is Victor Vidalis, and I'm the property and business owner at 6427 South Central Avenue in South Phoenix. I'm also a parishioner, and the current president of the Finance Council at St. Catherine of Siena Roman Catholic Church, located at 6200 South Central Avenue, who roughly has over 5,000 parishioners. I was given permission this morning by our leader and pastor, Father Alonso Sines, to share his support for light rail, and also his concerns. He believes this project will create a better future for the people who live and work in South Phoenix. He also has asked the city, help the community to clearly understand the construction schedule. asked the city, help the community to clearly understand the construction schedule and how it will impact each property owner. He asked very specific, that very specific and clear signage to help our members and visitors, our elderly, to access our schools, our churches, offices, and other businesses. He asked that our students have safe passage from our school to church during construction, when they cross Central Avenue every Friday and on holy days of obligation. For myself, I was born and raised in South Phoenix. I'm not a carpetbagger, I'm not someone that just came to benefit from the light rail. My wife and I have raised our five children in my hometown. I'm also here to voice my support of the South Central Light Rail, but not just the rail alone. As many of you know, I've been very involved. In fact, I'm here to ask you to consider that you take this opportunity to create a neighborhood improvement plan, and not just the light rail project. Because I live, work, play, and worship in South Central, I understand that we live in a harsh built environment. I have recently learned that South Phoenix Between the Sevens currently has 114 city streets that do not meet the current city standards. Eighty-four of those don't have sidewalks on either side of the road, and it will cost only 100 million, $50 million to fix this. We must soften these harsh edges of our built environment. We need the design of healthy, safe communities, providing the promised investment and necessary infrastructure from South Phoenix's annexation in 1961 and 1962. And we need transportation options to connect community members, our people, our residents, to each other, to other communities, and opportunities where they can work, recreate, have access to healthcare, and access to higher education. Phoenix has been designing communities around the car for way too long, and is what we are used to. And trust me, I get it. To change our built environment creates discomfort and a lot of pain. Throughout the change process, but healthy communities are designed around people and not cars. I've been all over the world and all over the country, because I've worked extremely hard, and I see these beautiful flourishing environments, and I ask myself, why not South Phoenix? Why can't my children have safe, lit streets? Why can't they have a walkable urban environment where there's shade, where there's beauty, where there's comfort? And I can't get an answer. And this is one of the first opportunities we have. I have spent thousands of hours since returning from serving in the US Army in 1995 during the Desert Storm conflict, volunteering my time, my talent, my resources to try to make our city better, a better place to live for my children and their future children. In the past four years, that time commitment has intensified with light rail, and I understand how much sacrifice it takes to be part of the design process, and how essential it is for the community's voice to be heard, especially those who are primarily impacted, like myself and so many others that are here today. We have big challenges ahead of us, but I trust we can work together to survive the four-year window of construction. I hope as part of the city's Business Assistance Program, you will look at tax abatement, utility vouchers, customized signage, special events, and other best practices that have not only worked in Arizona, but have worked in poor communities throughout the entire country. Not only to ensure that we survive, but to ensure that our businesses thrive till that end. I'll end with this. South Phoenix's human and economic development is critical to the remainder of the City of Phoenix as a whole, and many of us has, have waited a very long time to receive an equitable investment of this scale in our community. My buildings have been broken into, my air conditioners have been stolen year after year after year, because I don't have city lights lighting the frontage of my building. I have people having sex in my alleyway that I have to chase off on a consistent basis. This is what we deal with every day with those of us that live there and work there. And enough is enough. We need to get more investment beyond the light rail in South Phoenix. This, this area should no longer be neglected. This is our time to work together and unite around a shared vision to ensure existing residents and businesses will benefit from the light rail and enjoy the opportunities to come. My sister, who works for me, and walks from Central and Fremont, actually, Third Street and Fremont each day, to work, almost gets killed every time she has to cross Central Avenue. And my sister has almost been killed with her three little children crossing that street. And my mom was murdered from a dark street of four lanes of traffic. So, trust me, this goes way beyond and way deeper than just selling real estate. So, I ask you, City Council, to help us come together as a community, bring us together, and help us, it takes a village, we can't do this alone. We have to come together, share the opportunities. With all of us working together, South Phoenix can be one of the most vibrant, celebrated, culturally rich communities in the City of Phoenix and in the country. Thank you, and I ask you to keep this project moving forward.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
May I respond back to that very quickly?
Yes.
I'll be quick.
Okay.
I'm sorry about your mom. But this is not a light rail or nothing proposal that's being put forward. It's light rail or infrastructure. Use all the monies that can be available from light rail, everything that's designated for South Phoenix to be invested in South Phoenix only, not anywhere else, even on operational monies. You're talking about $18 million per year that could be pumped into South Phoenix for infrastructure, for better places to be, better bike paths, better everything there, better median, better everything. All this money would be designated back to South Phoenix. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I have...
Mayor, could we bring back up the slide that shows the funding mix?
Yes.
Because the money cannot, the federal money...
Cannot be, I know, moved.
If we don't take it, it go to other states. It's money that will go out of our community.
Correct.
The Prop 400 money is for light rail, so it could go to other cities, but it can only go to light rail. So this is hundreds of millions of dollars that won't be coming into our community. And when I was running for office, I heard over and over again what Victor was saying, that we don't get our fair share on the South Side, and that people were very excited about this potential. At the time I was running was when Congressman Pastore had gotten federal planning money to go in and look at the South Central, because he felt like it was an important extension, that people deserved their fair share on the South Side. So if we look at those, it's hundreds of millions of dollars that aren't going generally anywhere in Arizona, and for the Prop 400, not to the South Side. Those are dollars that can only go to transit. Earlier this day, I was at a Google event to try to get more young women involved in science and technology, and there was a teacher from the South Side who talked about what her student said. And she said that the South Side, Councilwoman Pastore, I would, I would ask you to respect me and not to laugh while I'm speaking.
I'm laughing about something else. If you like, really like to know what I'm laughing at. I'm laughing at the fact that you would mention Congressman Pastore at the time, at this moment, where I feel that I have been very active in the South, South Central Light Rail, and have had staff out there, unlike you.
My staff has attended those meetings. My staff has been there. I've sat down with Carlos Garcia, I've, I've met with the folks who just spoke. But I am excited about this program, I'm proud of this. This is a program where over 70% of the voters along the extension wanted the light rail to come to their community. People are excited.
Please, please, hey.
They want this investment. We have folks in communities like the public housing community who are used to saying, "We don't get nice things in our community," and they're saying, "We need to keep our promises as a city." The voters spoke, and they said that they wanted this investment. It was very popular. If you look at the front page of the New York Times today, it has an article, "Coke Brothers Finance High Tech War Against Transit," that specifically mentions Phoenix. And they talk about this outside money coming in to fight against transit. That's something that we have to face in our community. When I had my business owners' meetings, there were folks from the Koch Brothers organization there. They led the no on 104 campaign, but the voters said they wanted Proposition 104. And they spoke in an election where more Republicans voted than Democrats. There is data that shows in Democratic areas, including the South Phoenix area, very strong support. So if we put this on the ballot, we would see even more support in a higher turnout election. This was about the future of South Phoenix and investments, but also the future of the South Central area and Warehouse District. This is an important opportunity in a community that doesn't always get big investments, and we really can make a difference. It's also about vision for Phoenix. What kind of city do we want to be? Do we include people throughout our community and make those investments? And do we make significant investments in having a strong urban Phoenix, in growing our downtown and supporting the great tech companies, creative businesses in the Warehouse District, the workforce that says they want transit options, college graduates who could go anywhere but want to go to communities that invent, that invest in vibrant downtown cores. This is a chance to make a big bet on the future of Phoenix, and it's an exciting time for us. And I look forward to hearing, if you look around this room, the majority of the people in this room support the South Central Light Rail project.
Oh, please, hold it. No.
And it's exciting that they're here and are willing to get their chance to speak. I also want to talk about the outreach process, because I think that's important. In 2013, I was running for office, and Ballet Metro was at, I tried to go to every meeting, and they were at every meeting you could go to, the Phoenix revitalization, the business owners. It was a great, robust opportunity.
Let's have some respect.
So I just, I think it is important to hear both sides of this. And I think voters also need to know, when the council made the decision on the light rail extension, we had maps that looked at two lanes and four lanes. They got to sit down and see which businesses would be impacted and taken out, whether it be Dialys Centers, or, well, I was given the opportunity to sit down, and I would imagine that if you take the time and really look, and it was hard to see the businesses that would be removed. So it's exciting that we're giving the opportunities for those businesses to stay and be involved, and that we're not disrupting those 60 businesses along the way. People need to see both sides of this very exciting project. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I have, please, I have this many cards that want to get up, and they are all against. If, to save some time, if we, if I call your name, can you say you agree with the presentation, or just make a statement? Because we will never get through all these cards, and I want to give everybody an opportunity to at least voice a yea or nay. Jordan Contreras?
It's good to see everybody. I just want to say that I didn't know about this project till last year, so I don't think that this was a good outreach. It was, it completely failed. I'm a student, I'm 18 years old, and I'm gonna be voting soon, and I, I would definitely not have voted for this if I knew that the design would have been for two lanes, one going each way. It's just really sad that I've had, I've lived on Central my whole life, and that I didn't even know about this, and that you guys are trying to go forward with this. You know, you feel cheated, you feel you are not included. It's just terrible. So, being a student, I've ridden the bus my whole life. I was a point where I didn't even have a car, so I had to take the city bus to school many, 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 like almost every day. And I've taken it, and I go all the way to Awatuki and Mountain Point High School. So, I would take a bus up to the baseline around Seventh Street, worked fine, didn't have a problem. I don't, I wouldn't, I don't even, I wouldn't even use the light rail, honestly. I would keep using the bus, it worked fine. So I would go all the way to Mountain Point. And since I had double release, I would leave school like two to three hours earlier than the rest of my peers. And I had to take the city bus back home, all the way to South Phoenix on Central and Broadway. And I would see how the buses, when I got picked up in Awatuki, were amazing. They were, the air conditioning was great, the buses looked brand new. And as soon as I got to like Roser to get back home, they were ugly. There was trash everywhere, graffiti in the back seats, it was just terrible. The seats had no cushion. I would like to see that money spent into the bus system, rather than this light rail extension that I don't feel will benefit everybody for the amount of money that's being put forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Johnny Hernandez? Johnny Hernandez? Is he here? Oh, there.
Good afternoon. My name is Johnny Hernandez. I'm a resident of South Phoenix. My family has lived there since 1960. I'm an everyday bus rider still. I grew up riding the bus. I got my Ballet Metro card right here. I'm gonna ride the bus home. Every other day when I go take care of my father, because he's dying of Parkinson's, I go to Dunlap. It takes me three buses and the train to get there. God only knows how much, how long it would take me to get there without the train. And on the days that I don't, or are unable to catch the bus, contrary to what our council member, Mr. Kowski, I ride the bike to the bus stop. And you want to get rid of my bus, my bike lanes on top of that. All we're asking for is a chance to succeed. And it seems like now we're losing our chance. My daughter is gonna probably ride the bus, for a short time, because I'm graduating from college, so we're gonna move on. But there's other people who can't. And like the other council member said, I can't probably go to Seventh Street and buy groceries. That's impossible for me, sir, on the bus. Try buying meat, try buying milk and taking the bus home. That's impossible to do. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but to the ones, I challenge you to meet me on any day of the week, and come with me on my track on the bus and see what I have to go through, what my family has to go through, on a daily basis. Not once in a while, because I want to see how it feels, every day, because it's a way of life. I will let you pick the date, set up the time, dress regular, and make sure you put your walking shoes on, because we're gonna walk a lot. But I challenge you, just to see what it's like for the average person, not the business owners, the average person who lives right there and utilizes this transportation, who wants to go to school, who wants to get a better job, not at Food City, not at Kentucky Fried Chicken, or churches, but actually want a job, a, a career. Can we have that opportunity? Try walking down the street without falling in a pothole. I challenge any one of you two.
Sorry, I need you to wrap up. Sorry.
All we're asking for is a chance to succeed. We thought we voted on that chance, and we thought we were given that chance, but it seems like it's being taken away from us in the 11th hour. Everybody can have what they want, when they want it. This is a democracy. We make compromises, and we come together, but you can't have everything you want.
Thank you.
Mayor, just... Mayor, really quick, just for the record, 19th Avenue, Camelback, no bike lanes, but they have five lanes, and they have a shared lane with one of those fifth lanes. And that's what I'm asking for South Phoenix is, that they have a bike lane, but it's being shared with that second lane that we add on.
Okay, Susan Godino, I probably misspelled or mispronounced, G-U-D-I-N-O, and then followed by Perry Elam.
Good afternoon. Elderly people there, and they've been there 30, 40-plus years. So we constantly have fired, well, not constantly, but at least once a month, fire department vehicles and so forth, and ambulances coming through one of the neighborhoods, tending to one of the neighbors. It's just, it's a safety hazard. And if with the one lane, or the two lanes, and they're being around about, it can cost one of the neighbor's lives, and that's what we need to think about. It's about our lives and safety. And thank you.
Thank you. Perry, Perry Elam, followed by Maria Rebecca Luna?
To the mayor, city council, staff. I'm a longtime resident, grew up in South Phoenix, went to school in South Phoenix, and I'm back and working in South Phoenix. I'm for the light rail. I think it's time. I think it's time that South Phoenix begin to stand up and be counted as part of the City of Phoenix. You know, I'm kind of disappointed today when I am looking at the city council people here today, and they're kind of somewhat dividing the community by even their actions. I think it's time we begin to put all that stuff behind us. The, the vote was in, the citizens voted for it. It's time to move forward. It's time to get off this, what we gonna do now, what we gonna It's time to get off this, what we gonna do now, what we gonna do later? The money is there. Take the money, and let's make it do. It is time that we begin to realize that sometime change is gonna hurt some people. Sometime change is gonna be the right way to go, even though there's gonna be some people who disagree. Let's sit down. Let's take a moment. Let's take a deep breath. Let's put some programs together. Let's put some ideas together. Let's put some concepts together that we all can all of a sudden have a buy-in. This is gonna happen, people. This is gonna take place. Now it is up to us to come together, those who are against and those who's for, and the council people, to say, how are we gonna get this done? How are we gonna make it work? How are we gonna look at the future for our children? You got the Super Bowl coming in here. You got the World Cup coming in here. How are we gonna make South Phoenix valuable and of value with this light rail? I understand some people are gonna get hurt. I understand two lanes is gonna be a disruptive type of situation. But people, we're resilient. We're Phoenix Phoenicians. Let's make it work. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Rebecca Luna? Okay. Followed by Gail Knight?
I'm a proud Phoenician and a fairly new one, so I'm donating my time to my best friend and neighbor, Francis Castillo.
I'd like to thank you, Rebecca, for this time. I thank you, Council, for giving us the opportunity to be heard. I like to sit and look at the expressions of my people that represent me. And I'd like to thank that most of you are compassionate and care about our concerns. There's a lot of unfinished business in South Phoenix, starting with the Auburn Center, the Salt River Project. At once, a few years ago, they had a big hoop below. We're gonna have a replication of the San Antonio River Walk, and everything was going to be the beginning of something beautiful. Well, after the big celebration, that ended it. It's now a refuge for homeless. Our homeless are living there, which I can imagine, it's not too comfortable for the people who go visit the Auburn Center to study the birds and whatever. It's left down there because it's garbage. That's a project that's unfinished, and I do believe that some of you are aware of it and should look into it. The sand company that was there, the rock company, when they moved, they left garbage. It's a light. You cross the Central Bridge, what would anybody on the light rail coming from the north like to see? Old buildings, rocks, garbage, strip centers. Our police department closed because there's not enough policemen. And you all know, you have the control to give us more policemen. We need more policemen in South Mountain. Also, the bus station on Central and Broadway, it was given to Congressman Pastor. They named it Pastor Bus Station. Everyone was excited. Oh, we can go buy our tickets there and not have to go to the central station here downtown. Well, let me tell you, they build it. It's beautiful, but it's closed. They still have to go downtown and buy their tickets or to the Circle K's or whatever. So my parents that I deal with in St. Catherine's School, including my pastor, Reverend Science... Thank you, Councilman. I gave him information of the other side of the coin this morning after Victor talked to him. I don't think that he's going to be too happy knowing that possibly 80 businesses are gonna have to close for this light rail. Two lanes? That's all we're worth? Two lanes? We're everywhere in Phoenix. There's four lanes? What do you think that we are? I will encourage you to think about this project and to vote in our favor. Many of you are running for different positions. We're aware of who you are, and we will be aware of informing our community as to who to vote for. I thank Councilman Michael Nowakowski, Jim Warning, De Ciso, for being compassionate and caring about us in South Mountain. I'd like to ask all of you wearing those turquoise shirts, how beautiful you look. How many of you live in South Phoenix, cross the South Central Bridge every day, or 7th Street or 7th Avenue? How many of you, you know, you put on those shirts over your dress clothes? You probably came from the city job somewhere to represent us? I don't buy that. So, City Council, forgive me. I'm emotional. Thank you.
Please, let her talk. Thank you. Gail? Gail Knight? And then following hers, Rose Marino?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. I would hope that we could reach a reasonable negotiation with the community on their concerns. Because certainly there has been a lot of time invested into the revitalization of the South Phoenix community. Councilman Nowakowski mentioned starting in 2000, and certainly that was the case with the lower South Mountain Village area, from 7th to 32nd, from the river bottom to Rosier Road. Two neighborhood groups that came together, the South Phoenix Village Neighborhood Association and the Target Area B Neighborhood Association, to present to this council and to get approval for revitalization, infill, restructuring, infrastructure, all the things that have been talked about today. And the one wish that they always all had was that both districts, 8 and 7, would come together and support transportation. Because that was also on the list of major priorities for that area. To have a councilperson to state that they don't agree with the light rail and take your anger and say, let's get this on the ballot, to totally derail it? Be careful of that, folks. You make sure that you're getting what you came here for, and that is a way in which we can come to an agreement on the two lanes, the three lanes, the four lanes, whatever. But let's not have this project voted out over anger. Be careful of that. There are too many people who don't want success in that community. I have been working in it for 2004, working hard with residents who came for it and say we deserve for our taxpayer dollars to be invested in our community. Make sure that happens.
Rose Marino?
Yes. Just a moment, please. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. So, I've been a part of the light rail a long time, long before this conversation. Mario, there are eight districts in Phoenix. We each represent about 200,000 people. How much light rail money goes to District 2, the area I represent? Is the answer zero?
Yes.
The answer is zero. It's the only district that gets zero. So if anybody's getting cheated, it's the residents of District 2, who subsidize 53 cents on the dollar, unless things have changed, of every ticket for light rail. They pay for the infrastructure. They pay their federal taxes that comes back in grants that pays for this project. So the idea that I'm somehow making out like a bandit and somewhere else is getting the shaft, that's ridiculous. So, I'm looking up there. That's almost a billion dollars. A billion dollars. You know what we get in my district? We got about a billion dollars citywide over 35 years to fix streets. Notice how your streets are crumbling? Somebody else mentioned it, how they're not up to code? Well, guess what? They're not up to code in District 2 either. We have more streets than any other district in the city. But you know what we get? The same lousy $6 million bucks that every other district gets every year. We don't get the billion dollars. So I get a little bit of umbrage that somehow this is some sort of plot because it's going so well in District 2. No. No, the folks in District 2 are not getting their fair share, not even close. It's a billion dollars. The entire city budget is a billion too, just for frame of reference. So if I'm anti-light rail, there is, part of it is just philosophically, it's just a silly waste of money, bottom line. It doesn't move nearly enough people to justify the cost, not even close. You can come up with all the statistics you want. We can debate it all day long. At the end, there's no way to justify it, this kind of expenditure for what you get. But you know what I'd like? I'd like a fair shot at trying this over again, not a vote in August of an odd year when only 21% of the people participate. Let's try it again. Councilman Geiger may very well be right. It may pass again. Okay, that's just the way it goes. But I felt like I had to say something because the implication was somehow everybody else in the city is making out, except the folks in this audience today, and that's simply not true. Thank you for the time, Mayor. I know you're trying to move things along, and I apologize.
Thank you for your patience, Ms. Marino.
Okay. Mayor Williams and City Council, thank you for this special meeting. My name is Rose, and I have four points. Sometimes, you know, we people, we need a little educating. Like, some of us, I think, we're not sure the difference between why we're here about buses and light rail. Maybe it would be nice if one of you would explain. Sometimes, some of us that don't understand the difference, it would be nice. But what I understand, now I'm going to my four points. What I understand about the light rail, that it's old technology, and light rail is old technology. Our young people prefer the new innovations. Perhaps something that would be more cost-effective would be nice. But, and back to the part, Councilman Nowakowski, emergency access. There's like seven streets that won't have emergency access. That's St. Charles, St. Anne, St. Catherine, Montanado, Vineyard, Fulton, and Raymond Street. So that, to me, that would be an issue, you know, what's gonna be of that? If it's gonna cost lives, you know, what's the process in that? My purpose for standing here is not, I just need to have knowledge, probably, like what Celia said, that we haven't been notified. The other issue that I have here is, does, is there documented data? Okay. Does documented data exist that proves two lanes will attract development? Because that's, I was discussing with one of the gentlemen here with the green shirts, you know, and I had a bunch of questions to him. And maybe I have some of those questions to you too, those whoever it was that I was supposed to direct them to. I would be, I'm interested in that data, you know. Otherwise, I go by the belief system in my business. It's a win-win or no deal. So that's how I feel, you know. I don't think it's a win-win. So I'm kind of going with the others that, you know, I think that money could be used in different other, like Mr. Vidal mentioned, you know, to beautify all the streets, not just Central.
I appreciate it. Raymond Perez? Followed by Carol Clough? Mr. Perez? Okay. Then Carol Clough? Oh, they're downstairs? All right. We'll give them an extra minute or two.
While they come, could we get a little bit of a briefing on the emergency access issue from our staff?
Yes, that's a good idea.
Yes, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for asking that question. So one of the things that has been brought up multiple times is the issue of how will emergency vehicles get through on South Central? And so even in a one-lane-each-way configuration, because of the space that's there, it's still gonna be about 20 feet, which includes the vehicular lane, the bike lane, and the space between the curb and the lane. So the fire department has minimum requirements in terms of what needs to be there for the street design, and this design exceeds that requirement. So what happens is, if there's an accident, there is room for an emergency vehicle, a fire truck, to get through when the traffic is, when the traffic is parked, when the traffic is pulled over to the side and stopped, even though this wouldn't be a configuration that you'd want to have two lanes where vehicles are traveling at full speed. It's a situation where an emergency vehicle can get through when the other vehicles are off to the side, which is what we saw in one of the graphics that was shown earlier. It's also a situation where if a bus is parked on the side, vehicles can still have room to pass, or... And so that's an important piece that we need to make sure that people understand, is that emergency vehicles can still get through even with one lane, even if there is an accident and it's pulled to the side, vehicles still have the space to maneuver through Central Avenue.
And Mayor, if I could add to that also, we are designing this, yes, specially, in South Central. So there are more breaks in the light rail than there are in other sections that have been designed around the city. That means there's shorter distances where there's blockage, where emergency vehicles and others can turn, can make U-turns, can have access for shorter distances than exist on the rest of the 26 miles. So it's been designed, considering the neighborhoods, the impact, the cul-de-sacs that exist, to provide complete adequate access for emergency vehicles.
Thank you.
Just responding to that, I was in a briefing that basically said that these streets improvements normally come with the Valley Metro. Then when we asked Valley Metro, Valley Metro threw the responsibility back on the city, saying the city streets are our responsibility, and that there isn't extra funds to improve those streets for access to 7th Street. So I think there's a lack of who's taking on the responsibility. Once the light rail's built, somebody has to take on that responsibility of making sure that there's another way out of those neighborhoods so that those emergency vehicles, in case there is a funeral procession, if there happens to be a major accident that you can't come through Central Avenue, you have to have an alternate way in and way out for those seven streets that are landlocked. And that's my concern, and nobody's taking on that responsibility of un-landlocking those neighborhoods.
Did Raymond Perez come up? Okay. I take it, Carol? Please, go ahead.
I've lived in South Phoenix for over 50 years, and I have to deal with the traffic every day with the two lanes on each side, four lanes. And I'm telling you that it's rush hour traffic. There are a lot of people using that street. And you cut that down to one, and it's gonna be traffic congestion. You have not any idea. If somebody wants to make a left-hand turn, they'll be backed up to the next light. It's not conceivable to make that a one lane. If you live down there with us, travel it day in and day out, you will understand that. But we just can't do it. Another thing, I live right off of Central Avenue, and I am very worried because one of our people in our last meeting took a ride on the light rail, and he said, the first thing somebody said, "Welcome to Homeless Hotel." I'm widowed. I am worried about living off of Central Avenue near a light rail with homeless people getting on and getting off. There's a Circle K right there that's bad enough for me, the foot traffic. This is going to just add, it's just gonna make it worse and worse. And I know, City of Phoenix, you want your money. You want, you want money to come in. But I propose, you put it over on 24... on 24th Street, where you already have two park-and-ride lots that nobody uses. You, you have the airport, that, and the, and 24th Street goes right up to South Mountain Community College, and that beautiful parking, or, or, it's not a mall, but it's Target, all the wonderful stores there. You have a place to go to. When it ends at Central and Baseline, you have two chicken places, you have a Circle K. It goes nowhere. At least on 24th Street, the streets are wide enough to take care of it, where Central is not. And, and you'll have destinations. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Silberio Ontovars. Followed by Steve Hastings.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. First, I'm embarrassed by the actions of some of the council members. It's embarrassing to be a taxpayer here and seeing how you treat each other.
Please.
I have lived in South Phoenix, well, my family moved to South Phoenix in 1955. We lived at 145 West Jones, down the street from Beast Fish and Chips. And my adult life, I've lived in District Seven or District Eight in South Phoenix or Levine. And now I moved to the North Side. I live in Grand Park. That's between Central Avenue, near Central Avenue and Buckeye Road. I invite you to see, to experience a roadway with one lanes each way, and it seems to work. You're not traveling at 35, 40, 45 miles an hour, but you're, you're getting through this downtown Tempe. Downtown Tempe is one lane both ways. And you can, from the, from Rio Salado to University. Doesn't go all the way to Baseline, but I travel on that street, and I get around. A lot of people get around, and there's a lot of high density there, a lot more than on South Central. We need to address the valid concerns of the business owners and operators, and help them address any negative impact from the construction. We also need to provide adequate safe space design and adequate security at the facilities. As for the property owners, and I have friends that are property owners along South Central, they will see improved values to their property with the improved infrastructure and improved public transportation due to the South Central extension. If the property owners truly cared about improving South Central, they would have invested in improvements throughout the years. In 1969, I did a, a report, and I took photographs from, of South Central from the Rio Salado down to Broadway. It still looks the same. Near, the photos depicted the same pre-World War II buildings, and buildings constructed in 1950s and 1960s. Today, the same buildings exist, but with different uses and names. Still the funeral homes. Instead of a feed and seed store, you have a window tent business. Instead of a goodwill, we have a transmission repair shop. Instead of a beauty college, we have a used car dealership. Instead of a movie theater, we have an abandoned Salvation Army store. The only true change is that there are sidewalks along Central Avenue. And finally, light rail would benefit our youth, as they take it to several school, they could take it to several schools located on Central Avenue or adjacent to Central Avenue. I ask you to keep the project moving forward. Thank you.
Louise Palovich. Louise Palovich. Oh, are you?
I'm Steve.
Go ahead. He's fast.
Good afternoon, Mayor Williams, council members. Thank you for having this meeting today. My name is Steve Hastings. I'm the Director of Real Estate Services for the Foundation for Senior Living, which owns several properties in the south of Phoenix. I'm here in support of the South Central Phoenix Light Rail Extension Project, and urge the council to ensure the extension will continue without interruptions. The Foundation for Senior Living built the Rosier Apartment Complex, located at 454 East Rosier, in 2004. And just last week, we were awarded funds from the Arizona Department of Housing and the Federal Home Loan Bank of San Francisco to expand that property onto a site we purchased next door for a total of 104 units. This will be affordable housing for seniors with new community building, amenities, a swimming pool, and space for people to move around. We can comfortably accommodate this many units we've developed, because we've developed a site plan for this property based on a reduced parking plan, given its close proximity to the new South Central Light Rail. We are also the development partner with the City of Phoenix for the South Village Project, which offers 121 new energy-efficient single-family homes for sale, 37 of which which are complete, and more under construction. We were drawn to the South Village Project because it had the potential to be transformational to the individuals and families who live there now, and the community that it will, it will become. It is an opportunity to completely change the course of a neighborhood that has amassed an overwhelming number of vacant lots. An important element of our publicized development plans includes the close proximity individuals and families will have to the new light rail. The South Central Light Rail will give the current and future residents the freedom to connect regionally, to destinations, to employers, restaurants, museums, social events, and activities. Today, because of the South Phoenix Village Partnership, we can and have provided high-quality, energy-efficient homes for families that grew up in the area and have subsequently moved away, now they can afford to return to the neighborhood to purchase high-quality, affordable housing. Even more so, the opportunity to access reliable, low-cost transportation is essential to the families that live there and have already invested in their new SPV home. It will be equally important to the families looking to return or relocate to the area.
Thank you very much. Louise Palovich. Followed by Devney Perez.
I told Mr. Nowakowski that I had nine copies. I only have one, I hope you'll share. I've lived in South Phoenix for 20 years. My home is at Central and Elwood Street. Scottsdale had the courage to say no. Glendale had the courage to say no. As stewards of hundreds of millions of dollars, of the blood, sweat, and tears, of the good work, hard-working folks of the United States of America, we can put this money to a higher and better use. We can do so much more. Our infrastructure will not take a body cast on a pimple that needs to be changed day after day in perpetuity. We can't afford this. Our infrastructure is crumbling. We are one. The Roosevelt School District, out of three school districts in all of Arizona, has the worst safety record of their buses. The reparation of their buses, they maintain of, their maintenance of their buses. We can put transportation money into new buses. The ones that can be fixed, fix them. The ones that can't, chuck them and buy new. We keep telling our kids that, that education is important. Go somewhere else and get it. We have everything that we need. We have a college, we have libraries and schools. We keep telling them that they are worth it. We need to show them.
Need you to wrap up, please.
This is one more instance of Sun Belt apartheid. 150 years of environmental racism of NIMBY, not in my backyard. We know what's best for you. This is what's gonna help you. I don't believe in this project as it exists.
Thank you. Devney? Followed by Chris Morrell.
Mayor and Council, my name is Devney Price, and I am speaking today on behalf of Phoenix Community Alliance, which is the 35-year-old business leadership and advocacy organization for downtown Phoenix. PCA has more than 240 members ranging from, ranging from small nonprofit community organizations to large corporations, plus students and private professionals. As previously mentioned, our members work together to create a stronger downtown for a better Phoenix. This is accomplished through our advocacy committees, which focus on the priorities outlined in our downtown strategic plan. The light rail is a connection between neighborhoods, medical facilities, K-20 educational institutions, city services, arts and cultural institutions, and children's programs. It fosters mobility between communities and provides access to jobs across a variety of sectors throughout greater downtown. The South Central Light Rail Extension Project will provide even more Phoenix residents with this connectivity. The light rail serves as a physical link for the advocacy work of PCA's education, arts, culture, and public life, central city planning and development, and multimodal connectivity committees. PCA has previously publicly supported the South Central Light Rail Extension Project, as requested by our multimodal connectivity committee, and continuing the project is again supported by PCA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak today. My name's Chris Morrell. I live in South Phoenix. I've lived there for 16 years at Central and Dobbins, and I actually worked downtown at Central and Thomas. I'm a, have been LD27, Second Vice Chair from 2014 to 2016, and been a precinct committeeman for nearly 10 years. I can say unequivocally, I've never received any information and no door hangers concerning the light rail until just recently. I know we've discussed it in our, our precinct meetings on a monthly basis in the past, about trying to get information. And I, and I've heard consistently that the community's not been outreach, which is pretty sad considering the, the millions of dollars being spent, and a few people making those decisions on how it affects the lives of hundreds of thousands in the community. My, my route to work has already been affected by the light rail in downtown, with the increased traffic along Seventh Street and the increased traffic along Third Street. We don't have the luxury in South Phoenix to have Third Street or Fifth Avenue, if only one lane in each direction is on Central. Traffic will naturally go to Seventh Street and Seventh Avenue, which are already construct, congested based on new construction of homes in the community. My commute 16 years ago took approximately 20 to 25 minutes in rush hour. Today, it takes about 35 to 40 minutes. Same exact route, same exact hours. That's because of the increase of buildings and the increase of traffic along Seventh Street and Third Street, simply because that shift from Central over to those streets have already been affected. One of my concerns as well is, what is gonna happen to the existing bus route along Central? If you have just one lane, and there's a bus pulled over to pick up people, that's gonna cause additional congestion. Doing away with a turn lane is gonna also cause additional congestion. My personal experience has shown that it doesn't ease congestion, it just moves it to a different place and makes that other street or avenue worse. Thank you.
Thank you very much. James Neal. James Neal. Then followed by Ernestine Edwards.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for your time. My name's James Neal. My partners and I are the owners of the Food City Anchor Shopping Center at Jesse Owens and Central Avenue. We're one of the largest, a fairly significant property, and we were not contacted about the light rail other than probably about a year ago, at which point, you know, we had probably two of the meetings that have been mentioned here, and both of those meetings were simply a, a conversation about Central Avenue was being cut down to two lanes, and that was the way it was gonna be. And, and there was no opportunity for feedback, really, other than just, yeah, them telling us that that's the way that it was. I feel that residents may have voted for light rail in Prop 104. The language for Prop 104 was to expand light rail and high-capacity transit to serve more Phoenix neighborhoods. And I believe voters did vote for that, but I, I don't see anywhere in that proposition where it states that we're gonna take a major arterial, and we're gonna cut it in half to accommodate light rail. And I don't, I have a hard time picturing anywhere in the country, any other major city in the country with a growing population that's gonna take a major arterial and cut it in half at the expense of, of light rail. Two lanes on Central is not gonna be good for anybody. It's gonna shut down the businesses on Central Avenue. Cutting their traffic in half is gonna have a significant impact on any kind of business revenue. Once the construction is completed, that's when the real struggle is gonna be, when there's really only one lane in each direction. Those businesses won't be able to survive. The grocery store and our shopping center may or may not stick around. The businesses, the 15 other businesses that we have, may not, the, the 80 businesses or more that are up and down Central Avenue may not be able to stick around. And what's gonna be left with a mistake of one lane in each direction is gonna be, you know, vacant, a vacant Central Avenue that once was the heartbeat of, of the neighborhood. And the transit-oriented development's not gonna come with just one lane in each direction. I mean, I'm in development, I'm in the development community. It, transit-oriented development depends on vehicular access as well as light rail. And one lane is not gonna spur development. So we're gonna be left with vacant property up and down Central for the next 20, 30 years. And we're not gonna have rising property values, as some people have stated, we're gonna have declining. We need a better explanation for why this decision was made. I keep hearing 70 or 80 businesses are gonna be, or properties would be impacted in order to do four lanes on Central Avenue. I saw, though, today in the, in the paper, that number was quoted and revised down to 50. I personally believe if we really examine that, the number is far less, and probably less than 10, if that. I've done my own study, even though Valley Metro doesn't seem to have much in the way of, you know, data or names, any of those businesses, any address, anything. But, you know, you go and you do a, you just drive up and down Central Avenue, or you do an aerial photography study, which I have here. I can find, you know, a couple spots where Central Avenue is, is narrow. At the, at the narrowest point, it's 74 feet, 72 feet. In downtown Phoenix, for four lanes plus the light rail, the street is 80 feet wide. So on, on Central Avenue, if we, we have 72 feet. And then we also have additional property on either side until the, until the, any buildings are built. There's more than 10 feet on either side. There's plenty of room for the, for the four lanes, for the light rail and sidewalks. There may not be adequate room for all these bike lanes and landscaping, all things everybody wants, but as a compromise, you know, four lanes are, I think, are far more important than landscaping islands. So I have those aerial photos here. I'd be happy to have any of you guys look at that.
Thank you. Ernestine. Followed by Lyle Pocher.
Hello, Mayor, and all the council people that's here. My name is Ernestine Edwards. I live on South Central, on the street just about, because I'm so close to the sidewalk. And I'm against the light rail coming through. I would appreciate it that money could be spent for improvement on Central. I know we need to improve the area. Definitely, the area needs to be improved, but it's another way we can improve this area, because it is a landmark, and many of us been there. I've been there 40-something years. I've seen changes. I've seen this, and I've seen that, you know. But to keep it in a better state, we can use the money. If the bus system was better, because if the light rail is going straight through, and you're on that bus, and you need to get off to go to Seventh, or go this direction, that's a long walk. Let me tell you, I walk much, and it is a long walk. But I, I'm, I have confidence. I know that we can come together and come up with a solution, a solution. That's all we need, is one good solution for everybody. Everybody might not want it, but the best, the best of the best. So I'll leave you with that.
Thank you. Following Lyle is... Following Lyle is Mac Grecel. I just think I blew that name. G-L-E-C-K-E-L.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council members. Thought I'd just read an email that I sent to every one of you earlier today. My name is Lyle Plocker. I'm involved in the leadership of the Central Park Neighborhood, Central Park Neighborhood Association on the south side of downtown Phoenix. I live at 749 South 2nd Street, just steps from three future light rail stations. I'm writing today to express my support for moving ahead with the South Central Light Rail Extension as currently designed. South Phoenix has been waiting a long time for this kind of economic opportunity, and it would be short-sighted and foolish to waste this opportunity. I understand there will be obstacles for local businesses to overcome during light rail construction, but all change requires pain, and I'm sure both Valley Metro and the City of Phoenix are well-prepared to help affected businesses through the construction period, based on the previous experience with all the other light rail aspects currently completed. If there is a vote today at the City Council meeting, I'm asking you to vote in favor of moving forward as planned, without any kind of delay for reconsidering the design. At the time, I didn't realize that there was not going to be a vote today, and I'm also not an authority, but from what I understand, downtown Mesa has just one lane of traffic in each direction, and I haven't been there for quite some time, but from what I read in the newspapers and have heard, downtown Mesa is thriving, except I think they're next up to get an ASU campus, so I think all those who are opposed to this really need to give serious thought to your children and the future of your children. I know that a lot of young people ride the light rail, and you kind of look at the light rail in the same kind of category as, say, the internet. A lot of older folks still are having some problems adjusting to the internet, but we're talking about future, and we're, from what I understand, if, if changes are made and this is all slowed down, there's a very strong chance that the funds that are set aside for this will not happen, will not be there. So, anyway, I'm just encouraging the City Council and all involved to think about the future, not temporary inconvenience and pain, but the growth that needs to happen and the economic benefit that will follow. And I'm in total agreement with Silvario from his earlier comments. Anyway.
Thank you very much. Wes Harris. Followed by Abraham James.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, my name is Wes Harris. I do not reside in South Phoenix. However, I am deeply involved with a nonprofit down there at 20th and Alta Vista. They will not be benefited by, by this light rail. This was an organization that works with at-risk kids. I'm down there about three days a week. I travel down 24th Street. That was an excellent proposal that we would, if we're going to put light rail, 24th Street's a better one. There's no businesses on it. I drive it every day, take the 51 down to Van Buren, and then over to 24th, and straight on down to, to Southern. There's houses, it's a, it's a better one, and it's very light. I think you need to take a look at why Glendale turned it down. They turned it down, not because of the light rail and the construction and the, and the difficulties, but they turned it down because of the maintenance. The maintenance costs exceed the capital costs every year, and this goes on and on and on, and we never even talk about that. When we built the, the light rail the first time, I fought against 401. I would fight against it, I would fight against it again. It is a very bad, very poor method of transportation, and prior to that, we were paying 75 cents out of every dollar, and I think that that's gotten up a little bit greater than those that are writing it. I urge you to kill this thing. It's a bad deal. It's a bad investment. Your first loss is your best loss from a financial point of view, and I put on my financial hat, which I have very extensive history in high finance. This is not something we should be doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Abraham. Followed by Steve Sieg.
Good afternoon. Mayor Williams, Council members, thank you for having this meeting today. My name is Abraham James, and I live at 2018 North 23rd Street. I live north of 24th Street, between Thomas and McDowell. My nearest, my nearest light rail station is, would be on 24th Street, Washington, and Jefferson. As a former Chair of the Citizen, of Phoenix Citizen Transit Commission, and a former member of the Citizen Committee on the Future of Phoenix Transportation, I've been an early supporter of positive growth of South Phoenix, as well as Proposition 104. I am here in support of the South Central Phoenix Light Rail Extension Project, and urge the Council to ensure the extension will continue with no pauses or interruptions. As the fifth-largest city of the nation, I strongly feel that this will be a positive opportunity for the citizens of South Phoenix. It is my hope that with the passion in this chamber, that citizens will continue to motivate their city toward equity and fairness in the development of South Central Phoenix Light Rail Extension. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Steve, do you have the microphone? Followed by Janssens Contreras.
Yeah, I have one, but I don't think it's working. There it is.
Yep, we can hear you.
Yes, my name's Steve Sieg, and I have lived here in South Phoenix since 68, with a few, lived away from here a few times. I always come down to, come back to South Phoenix, and I've lived here. And first, first thing I want to say is that a lot of stuff that I've heard here is good, a lot of stuff I've heard here is totally erroneous, because like the original, I don't have a business here, but like the original thing where we were all supposed to be notified and such, I've never seen anything, and I didn't know anything about it until about, probably two months ago, and when I found out about it, I started going to the community meetings, and at that, at that time, I was just basically against, against the two-lane part, but after that, I learned a lot of other things. But let me say about the two-lane first. Pollution-wise, if you have, pollution-wise, oh, there we go, sorry. Pollution-wise, if you have a vehicle, four lanes going down the street, and they're moving with some congestion, you have, let's say, X amount of pollution. If you take and cut that down to two lanes, you've got X times many, many Xs, pollution, because idling vehicles put out a lot more pollution. I'm very much aghast at the, the crime rate on the, on the right light rails. I do know that in Denver, they have a regular police force that runs, that works the light rails. That's what they do. They stay on the light rails. We do not have that here. We have people getting on it, using it for a hotel, as somebody said earlier, and it's just all around a bad thing. They supposedly did a traffic study. I live down there. I drive up and down Central every single day, and there's a lot, there's a lot of, a lot of congestion right now, and then you make it into one lane. We, we don't, like somebody said earlier, we do not have the, the advantage of like down here, from basically the freeway north, where you've got 3rd Street, 3rd Street and all those, that you can bypass Central if you need to.
Thank you.
And that's pretty much all I got to say.
Thank you.
But I did have one other thing. I've been to all those community meetings, and I've seen Mr. Kowalski, everyone, and I've seen Laura Pastor there a good part of the time. As far as that, I've not seen anybody else that seems interested in South Phoenix and what happens to us there, and that's what I got to say.
Thank you.
Hello, I'd just like to say that when I was one of the persons who like handed out note cards to everyone to inform the community of what was going on. I think Valley Metro did a poorly job of letting the community know, and it's upsetting that a 15-year-old got the community and told them of what was going on, and many people did not agree with it. Also, I am a student, and for most of my life, I have rode the Valley Metro buses, and they are amazing. I've never had an issue with it. I got there nice and safely, and the right rail is just going to like cramp everything up. I've had a friend who rode the light rail and told me she got sexually harassed on the light rail. We want to protect our children, as many parents say, but there's obviously issues going on, on the light rail that they may not know about that needs to be fixed first before they try to come into a new community and tell us what needs to be fixed. Thank you.
Brian Cassidy. Brian Cassidy. Followed by Luis Acosta.
Good evening. I'm Brian Cassidy. I'm an architect with CCBG Architects. I'm at First Street in Buchanan. I'm also the Chair of the Warehouse District Council, which is a nonprofit business association. I sent all the council members, the mayor and our city manager, an email, a very strong support from the business owners in the warehouse district. Just so you know, more than 2,000 people work in the warehouse district right now, and more than half of those jobs were created in less than five years. We're on a roll there. We have 18 full city blocks of dirt and asphalt that will all eventually be redeveloped into nicer, denser, transit-oriented-type projects. And the focus in the warehouse district in the last five years is to purchase and renovate those great buildings that don't exist anywhere in the valley. But my charge here is downtown. Downtown Phoenix is 1 and 1/2 square miles maximum. The state of Arizona is over 100,000 square miles. If anywhere in the state of Arizona we need height, density, livability, sustainability, and transit, it's downtown Phoenix. It is the heart of this entire state. It has all our governances, from city, state, county, to the federal offices. It has our arts and cultural and sports institutions. It has our legal community. It has our court systems. It has robust education systems, from K-12 schools to all our prime state universities. They're all located in downtown Phoenix, and they all need to be linked up with all parts of the City of Phoenix. Downtown, again, needs to be a lot bigger, a lot denser, and the thing that we are missing in downtown is more people, more people living, more people working, more people playing, and having a city that we can compete with the rest of the country. I would say that the City of Phoenix is probably the least dense and has the least amount of transit options of any major United States city metropolitan area in the entire country. We have a long way to go. Transit and high-level thinking about infrastructure is what we really need in the city. Valley Metro has, and the City of Phoenix have met with the warehouse district repeatedly. I've attended at least 30 meetings in the last two years. They've come to my office as a business owner, one, we're basically one block off the light rail track. They've listened to our ideas, and I can tell you, we had a suggestion for the Lincoln Street Station, where they were going to propose putting the platforms in the middle of the street with a slip lane between the real estate and the platform. We asked them to reconsider. They did. They moved their concept and their routing to bring the platform up against the property, because they're one-way streets, and the result is, we will not have to block Grant Street. Grant Street is that conduit that leads to the biggest employment center in the warehouse district, which happens to be the Web PT Galvanize Area ASU's Grant Street Studios. Nearly 1,000 people work in that one-block stretch of the warehouse district right now. We think that the city needs to be bold. If we want a world-class city, and we deserve it, if we want a world-class city, we need world-class leadership from the community, from our elected officials, from our transit options. We need shade. We need a lot more elements downtown to make this better. South Phoenix is part of this extension, sir, so literally it's connecting downtown to these more bedroom communities south of the river. A healthy transit system is, exists in every major city except for Phoenix, so we need to do it. If we want a diverse population, if we want a diverse job base, give me a chance, people.
No, I need you to lap out, please.
Yeah.
Hey, please.
It has not been five minutes. I can count.
There's a light right there.
Okay. 10 seconds?
10 seconds, and that's it.
All right. If we want diverse employment, housing, income levels of all choices, and a great, walkable, sustainable, and vibrant downtown, we need to support light rail and not, not delay it. Thank you.
Thank you. John Louvisi. Follows Luis.
Mayor and Council, my name is Luis Acosta. I've lived in Phoenix all my life. I'm just here to make a quick presentation on some of the things I've heard. First, I have a handout here from Don't Waste Arizona, and basically, here's what it states in one sentence, but there's more than this. Any NEPA process starts with a required scoping, which allows public involvement through the process. So what it talks about is that the NEPA process has not been done by City of Phoenix, and that's been so, so far stated by probably over 100 people over the last several meetings, both at Alta Vista and here tonight. So basically, the City of Phoenix is violating federal law according to this thing that I did not write. It was written by Don't Waste Arizona. In addition, some other things have been covered here, is when they presented numbers that 75% of studies was the, that people agreed with this light rail, was that 75% of 20 people, or was that 75% of 20,000 people? There is no data. The city talks statistic constantly, but where is the data? Where are the sign-in sheets that you folks reviewed? Also, another thing that has not been presented, where are the numbers and studies of how many people are transported down Central Avenue on the buses? Because if the numbers are low, all you would have to do, instead of taking this federal money, which they're dangling a carrot at the city to spend money, they could just increase the bus to 10 minutes instead of 15, or eight minutes instead of 15, instead of all of this waste and destruction of families' lives.
Please, don't interrupt.
Everyone is talking about the future of our kids. What about these families who want to send their kids to college? They will no longer be able to do it. Again, everyone talks numbers. Where is the statistics showing ridership? Where is the data? You may talk 75% of data, but what data? It's made-up data.
Thank you.
And dangling this carrot over this money is why people make decisions. Some of those decisions are just strictly narcissistic in the person's interest who wants to say yes to this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John? Is John L-U-V-I-S-I here? Karinta Contreras? And then Mel Martin?
Hello, my name is Karinta Contreras, and I am a resident in South Phoenix. I live right on Central Avenue, and I lived there pretty much my whole life. I'm also a student at Grand Canyon University, and I want to talk about how, well, to clarify, I'm completely against the light rail being built here, the way it is. That sort of money could have been used in other areas that we devastatingly need in our community, as far as I'm concerned. been used in other areas that we devastatingly need in our community as far as all the infrastructure, the street lights, the list goes on. And I want to talk about, well, I have a question. You guys didn't mention that we will be tearing down the I-10 Bridge. When were you gonna notify us about that? That's another misinform information that we didn't get a chance to be notified about. That's also being covered by those funds. We at least have that opportunity, and we just have to be notified about all these issues, all the funding, what's being put, all the costs, the maintenance. It's highly necessary for us to be informed as voters who, by the way, I voted for the light rail to come, and now I'm against it. When were you guys gonna tell us about the reduction of lanes? That's highly necessary for me to know. And I'm a student. I went to Awatuki. I used the buses. They're fine. I do believe that we should use those funds to perfect the bus systems, lowering the times, maintenance of the buses, like those cushions. I actually had an experience with riding the rapid buses. That, for me, was astonishing because that was my first time riding that, and I was like, why don't we have rapid buses like all of South Phoenix? Because they are legit, like really good buses. All I saw was businessmen and businesswomen in there.
Please, please, don't interrupt.
All I have to say is that we really need those funds, but to improve our community, not necessarily just 3% of our South Phoenix community. We need the entire community to be improved. Thank you.
Thank you. Mel? Followed by Javier Espinosa.
Good afternoon, City Council. I'm glad she brought up the Central Bridge. We own some property on the Frontage Road, and the only way we found out was that they're gonna tear down the I-17 Bridge at Central. And you want to know why? Oh, let me see now. Central Avenue has been identified by Valley Metro at the South Central Light Rail Extension Corridor. However, the existing bridge does not have sufficient vertical clearance to allow passage of light rail system. Though, Valley Metro hadn't mentioned that, Javier. How many million, millions is that gonna cost? And what's that gonna do to South Central? I've got the copy for you in case you guys didn't already have it.
Mr. Martin, excuse me.
What?
Where did you get that document? Where's it from?
It's ADOT. I own property on the freeway, and they notified us because they're gonna put all the traffic on, they're gonna put all the traffic on the Frontage Roads north and south.
When in the hell are you guys gonna tell us that you're gonna close down the I-17? Come on! That is crazy!
Excuse me, excuse me. Councilmember, Councilmember, ADOT has a program to improve I-17. This is ADOT's program. They're also improving the bridges at Seventh Street and Seventh Avenue. The Central Avenue Bridge is being coordinated simply because the improvement is happening, and light rail will come after it. It is not a Valley Metro nor a City of Phoenix project. It is an ADOT project that is part of the I-17 improvement. Has nothing to do with us, other than it's being built at the same time.
Please.
How come it's quoted on ADOT stationary that it was requested by Valley Metro? So I'm not gonna argue with you.
Obviously, if you're building a light rail line, we can make sure that it can accommodate the light rail.
Let Mel speak.
I just, 2012, when this thing started, the city of Phoenix had meetings, and we talked about it, everything else. Nobody paid any attention to it because it wasn't supposed to start until 2031. And guess what? Very quietly, somebody else turned the light rail down. Bam! South Phoenix got it without hardly any hearings. That's all I have to say about that. I want one more thing. 2014, Councilman Norkowski made the motion. South SACCO seconded it, that they accept the light rail on South Central, provided that it didn't rezone the property alongside like they did up north. And how many people, Mayor, you ought to remember this, because how many people were in that room in opposition to it? Three. And I argued at that time that nobody in South Phoenix knew about it because it had been moved up on us, and a certain person argued that they did. But I'm telling you, we did not, and I've asked for the film of that meeting, and they send me stuff at this one and that one, but two lanes was never discussed. And when Norkowski made that motion, it was to approve the light rail on South Phoenix and no rezoning. And I'm for the light rail. I'm fine. It hurts businesses for two or three years. It's gonna help us in the end. But don't put one lane on East Side. Thank you.
I have a question. Has somebody initiated zoning, rezoning? Because I've not heard it. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask, I think the city, so I receive regular updates about invitations to meetings on the I-17, just as a person who lives in the community. And then we've had an update on the I-17 at the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee. I think they spoke about that the I-17 bridges were ranked among the most at risk in the entire country, and so there were many reasons they needed to make investments. Also, the short on-ramps, that it's very hard for cars to get on and merge because there's not as much room to merge as you would put in a freeway today. So can you speak to that, Maria?
Yes. The improvements, and I have limited knowledge, I mean, I'm not speaking on behalf of ADOT, but what they have communicated is that there are improvements that need to be made on I-17 from an engineering, from a widening perspective, but it's also coordinated with Valley Metro to do that work, to make sure that that works coordinated and done at the same time. So the work that needs to be done in the bridge for the rail project is being coordinated to be done at the same time, and that's, I think, what's reflected in that notice.
Thank you.
Javier?
Mayor, just respond to that. Right here, it says on number three that it's because of the height, right? That you need to make sure that there's clearance to allow the passage of the light rail system. So I was never informed, because if you, let's say, if there was an improvement of the I-17, you would still have to improve it for the height of the light rail system according to number three of this document right here. We were never told about that. I was never told about that as a council member that represents this area. So there's something wrong here, a lack of communication, right?
Okay. I take it Javier is not here. Dave Kreider? Followed by Greta Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor Williams, and members of the council. As most of you know, I come at this issue as someone who worked and was honored to work for the city of Phoenix for much of my career as the Community and Economic Development Director, the Airport Director, and as a Deputy City Manager. Over much of that time, we agonized over the poor state of public transit in Phoenix and how it affected our ability to grow and mature as a city. And we particularly worried about the residents that did not have access to transit. Starting with Mayor Rimza and transitioning through this council, we have made great progress. And I think it was super cool to listen to these young people talk about how good the bus system is in Phoenix. So, Mayor Williams, thank you for that, because that was something we grappled with years ago. Over the last year, we had 3.2 million people board the light rail just in downtown Phoenix. People using the train to downtown have access to medical facilities, daycare, children's camps, religious institutions, quality K-12 education, university undergraduate and graduate education, the full array of government services offered by the city, the county, the federal government, sporting events, live performances, Burton Bar Library, including the College Depot, which is one of our city's unsung heroes, the Science Center, and the Children's Museum. Staying on the train beyond downtown gets you more K-12 education, including some of the best schools in Phoenix, hospitals, doctor's offices, urgent care facilities, Sky Harbor Airport, and the main ASU campus. Perhaps most important, adjacent to the light rail are hundreds of thousands of jobs in downtown, Midtown, Uptown, Sky Harbor, and Tempe. Traditional office jobs, tech and creative jobs, service jobs in restaurants, hotels, hospitals, and jobs at ASU and Sky Harbor. If you're selling coffee at Sky Harbor or piloting a 737, the train will get you to your job. And from there, Mayor Williams would tell you, two miles of runway will get you anywhere in the world. In almost all of the presentations and discussions I have with people about light rail, I tell them, the most important opportunity for Phoenix is the potential to connect the southern part of our city and our neighbors who live there to the educational opportunities and the jobs that so many other Phoenicians benefit from, including myself, who lives on Central Avenue where the light rail currently exists. While we are not naive about the challenges associated with light rail construction, and believe me, I have been involved in some of the ugliest construction projects in Phoenix, it does feel that staying the course, that you, your predecessors, and the voter set, is best for our city, and I would encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Greta, are you still here? She left? Okay. Vicki Anderson?
Thank you for taking time today, Mayor and City Council. I sent a stock letter out this morning, which I don't typically do, but I felt it important. I was here at the last city council meeting, and my family has been involved in the process since 2012 and before. We went to many, many meetings sponsored by PRC and different community groups within our neighborhood. And at that point, South Phoenix said the buses were horrible. They wouldn't accept any bus system improvements. They wouldn't accept a streetcar in lieu. They overwhelmingly, in every meeting I went to, not just the ones sponsored by Valley Metro, I'm talking about community meetings, said they would not accept anything but light rail. Right? And you voted on it in 2014, and we, as the taxpayers, voted on it in 2015. And here we are, about to get started, and now the buses are great in South Phoenix. And everybody gets around so great in South Phoenix. But that's not really the case. It's really interesting to me that the businesses will benefit greatly from keeping people in South Phoenix. Because once you can get out, and once you have transit out of an area you live in with limited resources, you have choices. And I really hate that we're here talking about limiting people to their area just so that they can support the businesses there and no other businesses or education facilities in the city. And as a taxpayer, it was voted, I believe, and Mr. Waring, I'm sure you can tell me if I'm wrong, two people voted against the light rail in 2014.
I did.
And you did, and SACCO did.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah. Well, your neighborhood also voted as taxpayers, though. And we aren't gonna get the money back that was spent on the light rail, and we aren't gonna get those funds. And I think that's, people aren't really hearing. We are not getting this money from the federal government and from Prop 400 to just put somewhere else. It is going away. So South Phoenix, the money is not there to just transfer around. And no matter, and people keep feeding you these, oh, you're gonna get improvements. No! There are no improvements with this money. Not any. And you, as the council, have to answer to the taxpayers on how that money was appropriated and spent to this point. Not just the taxpayers of South Phoenix, but the taxpayers of the whole city of Phoenix, who either voted for the light rail or not. It doesn't matter. They're still paying the tax.
Thank you. Followed by Celia Contreras?
I'll respond to that, Mayor. So you're right about the federal money, but I'm looking at the 220 million and probably some of the 150, but certainly the 220 million, which is 220 million more than District 2 is gonna get. By the way, when you get the, and I'm not saying we want light rail in our area, but I'd like more than the zero we're getting out of this plan. So that's part of why I'm so adamantly opposed to this really poorly-thought-out 2015 proposal. But just know, when you get the light rail, you know what you also get? Rebuilt streets. Right, Mario? Around the light rail. Brand-new streets. So you get your 6 million, plus you get that money for new streets on top of it. So just remember, it's a fantastic point. Taxpayers did vote for it. Doesn't mean it was maybe the best decision, and I'd like them to have another bite at the apple. Some of you clearly agree, and some of you disagree. I'm just advocating from my point of view. I don't know what's gonna carry the day. I don't know what's gonna happen with the motion tomorrow. But I think anything would be better than a status quo. Thank you.
Sorry, sir. Go ahead. Please.
I think it's pretty obvious that people don't believe that reducing the lanes from four to two is going to really result in usable traffic speeds. And one of the issues, I think, that enters into this is the report that justified the project, the 2016 Transportation Technical Report, did support the fact that the, in fact, the lane was, other lane was, could be removed for the benefit of the, and the necessity, actually, to build the light rail. So my comments have to do with questions about the report. And I just would mention them here. First of all, it's kind of a hard report to get your hands around because it talks about something 20 years in the future, uses some assumptions for transit that are certainly probably going to happen. But, you know, that's the city's, and of course, for a big capital-intensive project, that's the long-range look. But the people who are here now, living here, really, and are going to have to weather the construction phase, they're interested in hearing about an interim forecast. This is an amazing report that includes nothing about what's gonna happen in the interim, such as the opening year in 2023. I go on here, and these are things that I would imagine, I would hope that Valley Metro would answer for you. The computers that are used to make these projections that we very much rely on are based on a process called validation, where you do a bunch of traffic counting, which was done in 2015. And then... bunch of traffic counting, which was done in 2015. And then, if the computer can do what the traffic counters say, you say the computer model is able to look at other conditions, future conditions, conditions such as removing, removing this lane. However, I wonder if the validation that was done, and I'm a traffic engineer, I haven't worked here, but elsewhere, I'm wondering how that validation was done, if this is reference to the work that was done for the regional metro, excuse me, the metropolitan-wide Phoenix with all of its suburban cities, which is a validated model, or if this validation was done for this small corridor study here. Another question from a technical standpoint is that rail stations need to be, need to have pedestrians coming in large numbers. I would say, you could say that the buses are needed to feed the one-per-mile transit stations. The zero, and it's pretty well set up to receive buses that are running along Baseline, Rosier, Broadway, and other places.
Sir, you can submit your questions, and we can get you some responses. I'm concerned I'm losing a quorum.
Okay.
You'd be glad to do that?
I'll give you this report, then.
Yes, please do. Give it to the city clerk, and we'll make sure we get the answers to you. Is anyone left on the phone? I don't think so. Okay. I believe we have lost. Two in there? There's two in there? Is Councilwoman Stark in here? Okay, we haven't lost a quorum. So next is Celia Contreras. Oh, yes, you did. Thank you very much. Ashley, and I don't know how to pronounce your last name, T.E.I.G.A.N.K. Are you here? Okay. And followed by, is it Jamaica Daniels?
My name is Ashley Ziganuk. I'm a PhD candidate in urban planning at ASU. I've been fortunate enough over the past month to observe and participate in the Four Lanes or No Train movement for my dissertation research. Although I'm not a resident of South Phoenix, I've come to really appreciate the sense of community and sense of pride that this group puts forth regardless of their stance on the train. My area of expertise in planning is public participation. Regardless of whether you support the light rail or not, it's clear that something went wrong in the public outreach process for this project. Filling out comment cards at informational meetings is not enough. Speaking with 18 people and checking off a box that you did community outreach is sadly not enough. South Phoenix is not against public transportation in progress. They are against a lack of transparency. That alone, that alone should be concerning enough to reevaluate the future of this project, whether you support it or not. Thank you.
Following Jamaica is Gregory Eric. You're up next. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you all the community residents for showing up. I am a native of South Phoenix, born and raised in Phoenix, Arizona. And I also serve on the South Mountain Village Planning Committee. So I'm happy to see that our community residents were able to come and voice their opinion. I do support the light rail. I am a real estate development, so I look forward-thinking. As part of the Village Planning Committee, it is our job and our duty to look 20, 30 years in advance, just as part of the growth of Arizona and South Phoenix as a whole, knowing that we have over 80,000 people who relocate to the state of Arizona, which is the fifth-largest city. We will continue to grow and have challenges and growing pains. But as I was driving from Central Phoenix, showing homes in Central Phoenix where the light rail sits right now, I was thinking it would be so exciting that as a resident of South Phoenix, that I could do a park-and-ride and catch the light rail down to Lucky Strikes, do a little bowling, go to a concert, go to movies, go to a restaurant. But then, the major part of my decision why I support the light rail is because it's about economic development. South Phoenix has an opportunity to grow. We have an opportunity to show the world that we are not only a melting pot of lifestyles, but we have always been rich in value and economic businesses. I come from my mother, who was self-employed, and we had a business on South Phoenix, on Central and Southern. And we used to cruise South Phoenix, so you know I've been there a long time. And my mother would always stop the police from harassing us and open up the parking lot and call it a private party. I also worked at McDonald's when I was 16, right there on South Phoenix. And I remember when they had the Silver Dollar drive-in. Anybody remember that? So our economic development comes with growth. The light rail has an opportunity to not only support its local businesses that are family-owned businesses, but ensure that as a city, we provide them with funds for marketing, to increase their awareness to the community where they're located, to ensure that as we build sidewalks and bicycle lanes, and we provide this additional transit for the millennials that are coming, remember, we can't always stay where we are. We have to look to the future. But I'm also proponent that the light rail should go to South Mountain Park, where the tourist attraction can come from North Phoenix all the way to South Phoenix, so we can bring more businesses, we can bring more urban development. I believe that South Phoenix can still be rich in its old horse property, its horse trails that I love to ride. But we can also bring a re-validation to the community where we bring in luxury homes, we bring in luxury condos, we bring in luxury apartments, where everyone can come into the community. I'm a resident of the community, so please be respectful. I've listened to everyone, but I also believe that we should also rethink about what the community is saying in regards to our lanes, so that they are safe and they also provide different options, because we were not. And as a Village Planning Committee person, I was not aware of the bridge. The Valley Metro was at our committee meeting last week, I believe, and it was not shared as a point. There are other positions that we also share that, as a Village Planning Committee, I was disappointed to hear that we didn't know about as well. So please listen to the community, but I also support development. And I'll support the councilmen to make sure they continue to work with the community as a whole, including Valley Metro. Thank you.
Gregory, followed by Jeff Sherman?
Hi there. Thank you. My wife and I, my wife and I moved to South Phoenix three years ago, and we very much enjoy this diverse and interesting community with natural beauty and nice access to downtown. We vastly support mass transit and light rail in general, but we are opposed to the current implementation. This two-lanes, one in each direction, is just not a good idea. We talk about Mesa having the two lanes, but I looked at Google Maps this weekend, and they have several turn lanes. So even if it's only two through lanes, they don't, they have turn lanes that we're not getting, I don't think. And so the two lanes is just not going to work. And I'm not entirely in favor of four lanes either, because that's going to intrude on much of the property of businesses and residences. And so I'm more in favor of alternatives discussed earlier, the 24th Street option. There's all, you can still get access to South Mountain Park from 24th Street. It's closer to the Mormon Trail than Baseline and Central is to the South Mountain Park entrance. And then 24th Street, with the extension of the Phoenix Sky Train to the Rental Car Center, there's, you could go over 16th Street from Buckeye, and you could cross the Union Pacific Railroad, so you don't have to worry about that hassle. You're not having to tear down bridges and rebuild them. They're already there. So I support that kind of application of funds. The, we all know construction is disruptive to businesses, but the simple truth is, when Central was cut down to two lanes, it's going to be a permanent disruption. And that's why I support alternatives on Central Avenue that would be modern streetcar or bus rapid transit. And so, and I'm also, I just want to, I'm getting tired of hearing, South Phoenix is its own community. It sounds like people here want to annex it into downtown. We, in South Phoenix, we want access to downtown, but we don't want to be annexed. We want to, we are our own community. And it's, we still want to maintain our flavor and maintain the legacies. And, you know, even for new people like my wife, you know, that are new here, we appreciate the community and
Thank you.
Want to keep it, keep it South Phoenix.
Thank you. Jeff Sherman, followed by Sparky Smith. Jeff Sherman? Okay, Sparky Smith, followed by Bruce Lingquist.
Good evening, Chairman Mayor Williams, council members. I'm a member of the City Transportation Commission. And the doctoral student completely changed my presentation that I wanted to make. But she addresses an extremely important point, and that is transparency. We know that South Phoenix rail extension got moved up for political reasons. We're not addressing the 800-pound gorilla in the room, and that is, elections have consequences, and who wins them gets to set their agenda. A lot of the problems that have been discussed here today are simply because the city staff had cover, political cover, and they didn't have to be responsible, in my opinion. Because we've heard a lot of these same things. I've been on two commissions now. One of them was the Efficiency Task Force, and the other one's the City Transportation Commission. Thank goodness Chairman Pastore goes to great length to let the minority get their word out. But there's only three out of 15. And therein lies the problem. When the vote is always going to go one way on these city commissions, the staff doesn't have to do their work. They don't have to be responsible. Because the political cover is there formed by the mayor. And oh, by the way, Councilman Gallego, thanks for elevating me up into the realm of the Koch Brothers, because it was myself and two other buddies and about $1,500 that did the majority of the work and put out those 130-something signs that we painted over old political signs on no to Prop 104. At the last minute, Americans for Prosperity got a $25,000 donation that I refused, because I knew I couldn't do the job that they needed or wanted to do. And at the last minute, that's the reason they got in on the deal. So it was three of us painting over the signs and doing this. And why did we do it? Because we knew, the more we expand light rail, you guys in here, you better get used to the condition of the city streets. Because the more light rail and public transportation we put up there, the greater the city of Phoenix deficit is, which means that we're never going to get over $6 million to take care of these road problems. And right now, we're out to a 65-year projected taking care of the seats. We have a horrible infrastructure problem. And thank you very much for hearing us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for serving on the commission. Is Councilman Valenzuela on the phone?
I am.
Okay. Are you ever? Are you Bruce?
I'm Bruce, Mayor. Mayor, City Council. First, I'd like to ask, what time do we have to be here tomorrow for your vote?
I think it's the last item on the agenda, and I don't know how many people are here or are on the agenda. I don't remember. Is it 200 items? So I'm thinking 150, I would say.
What, what time's?
About 3:30 or 4:00. Starts at 2:30.
There's 300 items?
No, there's 130.
But a lot are consent, right?
The liquor licenses.
Okay. Anyway, that was my first question. My second question is, I support the light rail if it had a purpose. Forty years of living in South Phoenix, I have watched how the city of Phoenix has redlined South Phoenix. Years ago, the Alvarado family donated 728 acres where the Alvarado Lake is, where now Caesar Chavez Park. If you drive down Baseline, you'll see that the 260 KV lines don't go across the property that was the city of Phoenix. City of Phoenix moved it to the north side of Baseline. That's the first one. City of Phoenix annexes property in the Levine area and anyplace else. The center line of the road is the Monument Line, but they annexed 33 feet to the inside of the development area, so they don't have to improve both sides of the street. They put 5,000 homes out in Levine, and we've got half streets all over the place. Now, if you would move to move the light rail into South Mountain Park, you'd get a lot of people. It's the largest park in the world. It's very underutilized. The Parks Department have told me they have a hard time getting money to do anything. Do you realize you're talking about district levels and size of them? That's 25 square miles, 16,100 acres in South Mountain Park. I've talked to Scott Miller, who is the Engineer Planning Director for the Light Rail, asked him if we could run one line down instead of two lines of rail and do sightings and couplets and move traffic around. Well, we can't do it until we get past Baseline. Maybe we can do it going into South Mountain. ADOT won't allow it. I'm here to say, let's talk to ADOT, let's talk, that's federal people, about running a single lane of rail stuff. I've been involved in a lot of planning projects, and somehow, people have talked about the transparency. When I did the master plan for downtown Scottsdale Mall, my charge was to make sure I documented everything with all of the people. I did that. When I did the Lake Pleasant master plan, I had that much documentation for all of the meetings we had. Then you go back and read it. R.C. Carden, it is the County Parks Director right now, told me that was the best thing that ever happened, because he can look back 40 years later and see what was discussed. We need to make sure that everybody has a say. The light rail could be a good thing if it's done properly, and there's ways of doing it properly. We can't just say, this is the only way to do it. There's an attorney here that I had met again for the first time in 40 years. Years ago, he and I worked on a project in Indian Bend Wash. I moved the development 160 feet into Indian Bend Wash, because there was a way to do it. You can't just say you can't do it. You have to figure out how to do it. And with that, I'll wish that you have a good meeting and think about all the people in South Phoenix. Think about all the things you haven't done in South Phoenix. We don't even have a movie house down there. I could go on for 20 minutes on what we don't have for a community of 200,000-plus people. And if South Mountain Park was flat ground, and it was developed at four, four and a half units per acre, there'd be 260,000 houses in there. There'd be 390,000 people in South Mountain Park. I think we need a vote for those people that live there. Right now, we're getting a dead-end rail that stops at Baseline. There will be very, very few people moving into South Mountain Park after you get past Dobbins. There's no traffic going north. So let's get District 2 to ride the rail down to South Mountain Park and enjoy it. There's no rail to get into Squaw Peak Park.
Thank you. He did have time donated to him, by the way. Judy Holm, and then Larry Cohen. Judy Holm? Judy Holm? Judy here? She left? Judy Holm. Larry Cohen. Are you, are you Judy?
No, I'm Larry Cohen.
No, I know you're not Judy. You don't look like Judy at all. You look like a Larry, are you? There you go. You're up.
Hi, I'm Larry Cohen. Just a couple of things I want to say. First off, I don't understand this whole thing. The light rail is supposed to be beneficial to everybody, but yet it ends at baseline. You know, South Mountain is the largest facility in the world, but yet it stops at baseline. Second of all, something else I don't understand. You have South Mountain High School on 7th Street. How many kids need that? I think a lot more kids need the light rail on 7th Street than they do on people than on Central. If we have to have it, that's a great place for it. But with that said, let me say this. I took my family. We got on the light rail, because everybody's talking about it. But you know what? How many people experienced it?
Please.
I got on it, and I brought my family, okay? So first off, I bought my tickets, which, you know, I think I'm probably the only one who does that. Because, you know, I waited 15 minutes for it, and I watched everybody get it. But I'm sure there's probably passes, okay? You know, homeless free passes. I mean, you know, it is probably the best way to move the homeless around anyways, the homeless hotel. But that said, so I get on, my kids get on, my grandkids, everything, and my daughter's freaking out. It smelled so bad, it was unbelievable. But you know what? I did look around, and I walked around. I walked from this end to the other end of the train and so on and so forth. And there were everything everybody talks about. The homeless, the stumblebums, the undesirables. But it is what it is. No one came to me and said, hey, did you pay for this, or did you get on for free? Because I think probably a minority, I was the only one that probably paid for it. But with that said, it's just very poorly done, and we, I just don't feel it's something that is really necessary unless it's really planned out. And I think if, in reality, now that the entire community knows what they're getting, now give them an opportunity to vote. Because no one knew what it was in 2014, it was a light rail. And you know what? Everybody's in favor of the light rail. But nowhere, and if you look at the pictures, the pictures show a light rail. But nowhere, anywhere, anyhow, anyway, did it ever say anything too late. Because if it would have said too late, I guarantee you, this would have never happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Francisca Montoya. Francisca Montoya. Followed by Jay. It's the only name on here. Jay. Okay. How about Star Bruce Reyes? Pardon me? Oh, Jay, sorry. I look for movement, and if I don't see anybody moving, I think they're not here.
Hello, hello. So I want to say, since Javier was not here, can I get, take his two minutes?
Do you have something new? Yes.
Thank you. So I have four minutes then. Thank you. All right, so I just want to say, the main thing, I'm from the South Side. I was born and raised there mostly. And we want the 90-day pause, because we want to, we want to come together as a community. We, our main thing is the 90-day pause right now. I want to just stick to what we really trying to do. The 90, 90-day pause. And I want to say to the people that, that want the light rail, can you tell me when I have one minute left, please? Because I don't want to get carried away.
There's a timer right here on the table.
Okay. Okay. So the people that want the light rail, do y'all understand that everybody know about gentrification? So what about the families? And when a light, if the light rail is built, if it's raising the prices? I know people that had to move out of their homes already. You know what I'm saying? Who here has a home to go to? Most likely, everybody in here. So have you thought about the people that don't have a home to go to because of gentrification or the light rail trying to be built? That they have to leave their homes, be forced out of their homes? Have y'all thought about that? Let's not, let's stop thinking about the money. Is everybody here, do y'all have somewhere to go home to live to? Because everybody's not going to have the opportunity if the light rail is built and everything that's being built on the South Side right now. So let's stop thinking about the money, and let's start thinking about the people helping the people. Stop thinking about the money. So it's better to help, it's better to help 100 people instead of helping 50 people. The light rail can help 50 people. But how are we going to help the 100 people? The education. Education is how we help the masses of the people, not a light rail. Light rail is not going to help everybody. So like I said, gentrification, it forces people to move out of their homes. What are y'all going to do for the people that has to move out of their homes? When y'all get, if y'all get the light rail, you see people moving out of their homes, homeless, what y'all going to do for them? What are you going to do for them? Think about that, man. Stop skipping over it. People going to be moving out of their homes. Stop skipping over that, man. People moving out of their businesses. Stop skipping over that stuff, man. Let's deal with these real situations. Do y'all really care about the people? The people that work for us, for the South Side, the representatives? Do you really care about the people? Do you? Because it don't look like it. What's your legacy going to look like? Are you hurting us, or are you helping us? All right, so I got 30 seconds left? Damn, that's it? So like I said, man, you know, it's like, help 100% of the people instead of 50% of the people. You know, we have an opportunity to, you know, get this money. What is it, 8 billion, 700 million, or something like that? Invest this money in something different to perfect our transportation system and perfect our community. You saying that we can't do it, but let's make it happen. We're not about, oh yeah, we can't, we can't use the money, let's make it happen. How can we make it happen? Let's stop talking about why we can't do it, and let's start talking about how we can make it happen. That's what we about on the South Side. Man, we about making stuff happen. So the 24th Street Bus, it's certain things that we can do to perfect these buses. Like, let's build shuttle buses. You know, we can make, instead of waiting on 30-second, I mean, baseline for 30 minutes for the buses, let's make the wait time, instead of 30 minutes, make it 15 minutes. Or build more buses, or bring more shuttle buses. It's certain things that we can do to perfect our transportation system.
Thank you.
Okay, give me, give me one more. I just want to say this one last thing. You know, we really got to stop thinking about this money. It's about helping these people, man. Stop thinking about the money and start thinking about helping these people. Because if y'all don't start helping these people, we not going to stop coming back. If y'all want that problem, keep messing with these people, man. Let's figure out how we can help these people.
Thank you. Jacob? Goodino? Followed by Kristin Serrano.
Hello, Mayor. I am Jacob. I am 13 years old, and I lived on the South Side most of my life. What I realize with being, living over here is that there's traffic, making it two lanes. That's not going to be very good. Even one lane's even worse. I have asthma. I know a lot of people have asthma too. And with that kind of pollution, can really hurt other people. But this light rail, it won't help at all. We can use that money to improve streetlights. We can do better bus stops. Because you know, some stops, there's just a sign, and you have to wait out there for 30 minutes in the heat. We can use this money for good, but I don't think a light rail can solve all our problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin? Kristin Serrano here? This is Serena Salida Alvarado. Oh, he's wrong. Stefan Jennings? Eva Olafus? Eli? Oh, there she is. Followed by John Chambers.
Mayor and Council, good evening. First, I want to say that I am a native Phoenician. Way back, a long time ago, remembering the Silver Dollar Drive-In, I lived in South Phoenix. I also cruised Central Avenue, loved it, but was then moved to downtown Phoenix, so continued my youth and adulthood down, right down the street, actually. So I work with Phoenix Revitalization. And our focus area, our primary area, the area that we are committed to is Central City South. So it is a forgotten little island. We are the neighborhoods that are just south of downtown Phoenix. Just north of the Rio, between I-17 and 16th Street. The wisdom of the residents in this area is amazing. In 2007, they put together a plan. They could see, arms-length from them, the development from downtown that they were not benefiting from. They recognized that the light rail would be an opportunity for their neighborhoods to change, for investment to come into their neighborhoods. And they wanted to see how they could get that and also manage that change, so that they could really minimize the gentrification. They looked at Central Avenue. And on Central Avenue, in that area of town, there were a lot of abandoned buildings. Now, that doesn't say that 100% of the people and the businesses in this community support this plan, nor, as you can see today, do 100% of South Phoenix either oppose or support the plan. But I can tell you that this community came back together in 2017, redefined their vision and their future and their plan, and again stated that they wanted to have the support of the development investment in light rail. I have to also say that it has not come without its challenges. We ourselves were shocked when we saw two lanes instead of four lanes. One of the things that this community, who is a community of almost all the original public housing that there were in the City of Phoenix, there was a Marcos Niza Public Housing, Hanson Symphony, Co-Fout. All of these residents got together and said, do not, do not forget South Phoenix. They're special. They're different than Central City South. They have different issues. We need to come to an understanding that we have to work together. We look different, and no different than the warehouse looks different than Central, than the Central City South neighborhoods. So these are three very different neighborhoods that are all in this alignment. And it's a challenge, I get it. But the one thing I will not do is dismiss the words of the people as they have written them in their plan. So I stand here for them and support the light rail. But I also know that we need to address some of the challenges, in particular about the one lane either way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Chambers, are you here? John Chambers. Raymond Cruz. Greg Brunel. Bruel? I probably really blew that name. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. And congratulations, Mayor, for becoming the mayor. And this automatically makes you eligible to come to the Catfish Ride this year.
Oh, well, good.
Wanted to, wanted to let you know. As Mike knows and Deborah, I've been talking about South Central long before the light rail was even a certainty or even thought about. And I'm not surprised we're in a bit of the jam that we are now, because even back then, I said we needed to have a huge amount of public input. And I think that we forget that that's very expensive, very hard to do. And we probably need a little more of it, and very quick if we're going to, you know, keep on schedule. I'm very much for the light rail. I'm, I feel, you know, a little bad that we've sort of lost our, our shared vision for what this street is. And I'm just going to share that for a second, and then I'm gone. The, this is one of the most unique roads, okay, that we have in the valley, or maybe the Southwest. We're between the Rio Salada River, okay, which some people think is just a place for the homeless. They haven't been in there. We fought and fought and fought to have that fixed, because it was just an ugly gash separating downtown from the South Side. And a lot of controversy, and we managed to get that, we managed to get that done. But the other side of the, of that road is another natural park. So we're one of the few places in the valley that have two geographic locations. And we have miles and miles of road to do everything everybody wants to do in it. It's an amazing, amazing street. Now, just a little South Side history, okay? There was a time we didn't have bridges, and there was a huge fight about bridges. And we weren't going to build them, they were too expensive, it was crazy. It was going to do this, it was going to do that. I think if we would have the district system as we have now, they might never have been built. But we got all those bridges built. Then there was the cruising on South Central, which went from being historic fun to being mayhem and shootings. And we were told, we're never going to get those cruisers off of the South Side. And we actually were told by some police that it kind of belonged there. And we got rid of, we got rid of that, okay? The South Side gets challenges all the time. And we have controversies and fights and whatever. This is like a big Thanksgiving dinner, kind of like when you find out your brother-in-law, you know, voted for somebody that you didn't believe they could vote for. You're still going to have Thanksgiving dinner, you're still going to get through, and we're going to get through all this. We got, you know, there's no news about the city having trouble with outreach. We hear that all the time at the Villas Planning level. And hopefully, we can always work for that. But just remember, this, there's a dream out there. This is an amazing, amazing street. And it's, it's, we need to do everything we can to keep these projects going. Do them better, and, and we will be the downtown that people will think about when they think of Phoenix. That'll be us. It won't be the other side of the river. Thank you.
Thank you. Byron Waldrop? Byron Waldrop? Oh, okay. Followed by Olaf Torn?
Good afternoon or good evening now.
Just thankful you're not saying good morning.
We may be there. One of these days, maybe we'll have that many people show up. My name is Byron Waldrop. I'm at Central and Jones in South Phoenix. I was going to, and I still am going to present these to the council. This is what I was going to give my presentation on. After sitting here for about three hours and listening to everybody else, I know we can all agree to disagree. And I also know that if we have a decent mindset from listening to each other, that we are hearing new things, we're hearing both sides. And I'm asking for the city council to have their ears open and go over, maybe even this meeting, pick out some things and hold them dear to you. Because any changes that you make, whatever you vote on, is going to affect us for a long, long time. And it could keep us at bitter ends. And we don't need to be And we don't need to be there. We are really asking for the 90-day pause. Why? Because we know there's terrible things that have happened in the other light rails with the crime. We know it's very expensive. We know we don't want to lose the money. So after hearing and listening, I'm thinking, okay, there's gotta be more transparency, of course. Especially for the city council, who represents us. You need to know what's going on on their side, the truth, and what we're learning about that hasn't been told to you. And hear those words and those things that have come out that are not true. And maybe make a different plan. Consider having a different plan of possibly 7th, 7th, 24th. At least, think about it, take these things into consideration. You've heard both sides. People think it's gonna be the greatest thing, and it might. It also might devastate Central Avenue to where all the old buildings will be gone. And so here comes all the newer high-rises with condominiums and such that people are, you know, talking about. Our values, our property values, will go down, and so it'll be bought up by developers. And here we go, we got a whole new society in South Phoenix. I would just emphasize that you just take time. Don't bicker so much against each other, but keep politics out of it, please. Think about the residents and the communities. Let's make it better, but let's do it the right way. Let's be informed. Let's don't go where the money is.
Thank you. Olaf, are you here? Olaf. Olaf Torn. I don't see him. Eduardo Diaz?
Mayor, since we have a second, can I say something about these statistics?
Okay.
Okay, so the last gentleman handed out crime statistics. You guys should all get a copy and look at this. I asked the police to compile this last year, I gave it to ABC, I confess. I know a fair number of people over there on 19th Avenue. Business owner, there's a senior center there, I happen to go over there about once a month. A doctor, whose office has been there 40 years, his dad was a doctor in that same office before him. They have very interesting stories to tell, but these statistics are irrefutable. You might want to take a look at this and see what you might be getting into. You should talk to the residents up here, they've been here to complain and petition their government. You should talk to a former Phoenix firefighter, he's lived over there 40 years. He is not, we do not have a natural political affiliation, we'll put it that way. But he and I have had occasion to discuss this several times. And he's like, "Wow, you guys ruined my life with this. I lived in that neighborhood 40 years, I love that neighborhood." I don't think I'm overstating his position at all. You might want to get a copy of this, I'm happy to give you mine, because I've got it already. And look at this, and just see what might happen. It is not a pretty picture. I could read some of these statistics, but it's been on TV, so it's out there, it's fair game, just Google it. But I'm happy to give this to whoever wants, you guys can make copies and pass them around. Thank you. And thank you for passing it out, the fellow who gave it to us.
Thank you, Eduardo, thank you.
Hello. My name is Eduardo Sanchez, I grew up in South Phoenix. First off, I want to say I love my community. I try to support my community as much as I can. I shop by small businesses. If I go, if I'm hungry, I go, you know, get a bite to eat at Pete's. If I need something for my house, I go to Ace Hardware in Central. So first off, I just want to say, I'm very afraid of what's gonna happen to those businesses if this light rail project continues as planned. I know those businesses along Central right now sometimes struggle. And I'm just afraid of what taking away 50% of the traffic on Central is gonna do to them. Everyone down there, everyone down there loves those businesses and want them to stay there. So I'm gonna apologize, I'm just gonna repeat some stuff that you guys have probably heard throughout the night. Hopefully, if I repeat them, you guys will actually listen. So the first thing I want to say is that Valley Metro did the most horrendous job at reaching out to anybody in South Phoenix. Nobody knew that this project was gonna be two lanes. Most people didn't even know that there was gonna be a light rail coming down Central. When you think of, even our council member didn't know it was gonna be two lanes, you know, how were normal people supposed to know? I handed out flyers for our Four Lanes or No Train group at Fry's on 7th Street and Baseline on Sunday. Even there, even on Sunday, nine out of 10 people didn't know that this project was going on. So I just want, I just want them to know that they need some better training in that department. Another thing I want to state is that I know they pointed to a figures of 72% of people that voted for this. I just want everyone to know that people that voted for this did vote for a light rail, but they did not vote for two lanes. They voted for a light rail, but not for two lanes. Another thing that I want to point out that happened with Valley Metro is, we had a meeting in April, and they told us, like they did even in their opening presentation, they are still in the design phase, according to us. It says through 2019, to the beginning of 2019, it's designing. So please, design it as we are asking for it to be designed. Four lanes, please.
Thank you.
Just one more, just one more quick statement. The only thing we're asking for at the end of the day is we just want to be treated fairly, like the people that live on Camelback, like the people that live on 19th Avenue. If they have four lanes, why can't South Phoenix have four lanes? Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Ortega Senior, followed by Brenda Gutierrez. Daniel?
Can you repeat the names?
Daniel Ortega. Just want to make sure, is there anyone left downstairs? Okay. Are you Brenda?
I'm Brenda.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And if the other person is not gonna take the other two minutes, I'd like to know if I could have those two minutes.
I prefer you didn't, because...
Okay, okay, thank you.
Lots of cards.
I'm a rock in a hard place. I see a lot of ex-co-workers, friends, colleagues, professionals that I look up to. And it's difficult, because I see the position that they're in. But I'm also a South Phoenix resident. And even when I was with several coworkers here, I then knew there were some issues with this light rail project. There were some transparency issues. It seemed like there was a political agenda, it was self-serving. And the diverse population wasn't given a fair chance or a fair opportunity to become educated, to educate themselves. It seems like this was a systematic approach. And even in watching your government channel, Channel 11, kind of watched how you roll out your meetings. And I've noticed that there are systematic approaches to the way you approach it, to the way you handle it. What is on your own personal agenda? Some of the information is not factual, there's missing information. And it's just, it's concerning, because some of the council are board members on the Valley Metro Board. Some of these questions could have been asked ahead of time. I mean, there's money wasting here. And it's not because South Phoenix residents didn't address the situation early enough, it's just they didn't know about it. And it seemed like it was a hush-hush, hush-hush situation. And only enough information was given to say that the information was out there. It wasn't fair, it wasn't just, and I ask that as public servants, you realize that your positions are to serve the public, and we ask that you do that wholeheartedly and put your own personal plans and your agendas aside. Because I know, now I know what it's like. It's not who, it's not what you know, it's who you know. And after being standing up here, I guess I'm gonna have to not put quite a few of you on my professional reference list, because I'm up here, because I am no longer employed. Because I stood up for what I believed in. And that's all I have to say for now, that I'm gonna support my South Phoenix residents.
Stefan Hastings, I think it is? Stefan Hastings? Warren Stewart Jr.? Here he is.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Out of respect, I think all the Valley Metro employees should turn around and face the community instead of facing their backs to them. I think that's the posture that we take. Instead of facing the council, you should face the community. This is a community issue. That's fine, I'm not the mayor or on the council yet, so I can't say that. So the public transformation is, the expansion of public transformation is dependent on everyone having access. It's important that the future infrastructure of public transportation is inclusive of everyone of South Phoenix. From small business owners to daily commuters, the expansion of public transportation is dependent on everyone having access to affordable travel systems. Now, the community members and the stakeholders were not contacted properly, and Prop 104 did not have accurate information on the light rail project. So what do we have to do? Follow the money. How many people are going to pocket this federal money? The elephant in the room is gentrification. This is a covert gentrification project. And the money needs to come to South Phoenix, not just for public transportation, but to create jobs for people who live in South Phoenix, and not just the people who live there and work elsewhere. The South Phoenix community is not taken seriously. And until we affect Valley Metro's money, they won't take us seriously. Gentrification is the new segregation. And on December 5th, 1955, the rest of Rosa Parks sparked the Montgomery Bus Boycott led by Dr. Martin Luther King. And so if that's what needs to take place in order for the right infrastructure to be in place in South Phoenix, then we should have Valley Metro audited and find out where all this information from the 380 meetings went. And then, if that does not cause the transparency and accountability, then we need to boycott Valley Metro. Because I think you underestimate, you underestimate the power of the people. And last thing, there is narrow thinking in the South Phoenix community. Why are we only thinking about the light rail project in South Phoenix? We need a councilperson who has a voice of the people and a future for the community. So put the light rail down 24th Street and closer to South Mountain College and the airport, and find money to rebuild the infrastructure. You let a lot of people go over time, please just let me two minutes. Please, out of respect, Mayor Williams, just 30 seconds. Find another, other money to rebuild the infrastructure off Central and create commerce communities that make South Phoenix beautiful. Revisit the Salt River and Rio Salado Project. See, what I'm doing is giving you solutions and strategy, not just talking about things. And so we need the beautification and not the gentrification of South Phoenix. And if there is no pause, then I call for a protest.
I believe it's Tracy Home. It might be Tracy Horn, but I think it's Home. Followed by Jenny. Diddy Home.
If I can get a couple more minutes, because my mom didn't, she had to leave. Her name was Tracy Home.
Please, we still have so many cards.
I know.
Do you have anything new to say?
Yes. Mayor and member of the city council. My name is Jenny Hom, property owner of East Warehouse District, next to Central Avenue. Having the lane reduced from four lanes into two lanes would be hazardous street, especially when the street on Central Avenue. Some parts of the Central was made into four lanes going north. A new sign was put up a few days ago, showing a sign, "No right turn going south of northbound lane." The sign isn't effective enough, because this morning, I was going northbound on Central, on the northbound-only lane. There were two cars traveling south on northbound lane while I was going north. Luckily, the lanes were four lanes instead of one lane to the right and one lane to the left going north. Having four lanes avoided collision. An existing law called Move Over Law has been established in 2005. Each state, including Arizona, all emergency vehicles have the siren or lights on, you must move over to allow ambulance, fire trucks, police cars, and sometimes emergency tow trucks to pass. Some parts of six-mile stretch doesn't allow enough space for cars to move over, such as the Salt River Bridge, where the bridge is very narrow if the rail were going to be built. This law do exist, Arizona Revised Statute 28-775. Also, there are many existing rails that provide purposes with shopping malls, high-rises, hotels, HU campus, entertainment district. But from Baseline Central, what is our landmark? What is the purpose?
Thank you.
Okay, well, I just want to say that there is no purpose to go on Baseline Central. Thank you.
Reverend Moplin, followed by, it looks like Paul Gilbert.
Thank you, Mayor Williams and Council, there's some other cards in there.
You have another one?
Yeah.
From Jared.
Yeah, so that would be Senior. So I'll try to keep it brief. You know, I've lived in South Phoenix all my life in the same place. And my father's lived in his house for 57 years. And my grandmother lived in her house for 77 years. And on my mother's side, we've had the same house near Central and Buchanan since 1884. So we're from here. I don't think that a majority of the people in South Phoenix really, really want the light rail to come down Central Avenue. You know, it's not the economic engine that people say it is. And the councilman, Councilman Waring is absolutely right about 19th Avenue. My family has some property over there, and we've had to unfortunately evict people with commercial leases, because light rail killed their business. Because all Valley Metro gave them was a sandwich board with an arrow on it to show people how to get to their business. I don't want to see the same thing happen. You know, we've got two businesses at 6060 South Central, 6030 South Central in South Plaza, and have thought about closing those businesses if light rail comes because of traffic issues. And I do want to say this, because I know time is going by. If you lost all the other money, federal and state, if you lost all the other money, you'd still have $220 million that you could put into South Phoenix if you really wanted to make sure that we had quality streets that didn't have potholes and a safe and effective grid system. $220 million is near, is a little more than a fifth of... Two hundred, $220 million is near, is a little more than a fifth of our city's budget of a billion. You can do a lot with $200 million. And then you should take a look at what comes out of the city's annual budget going to Valley Metro. Every year, they're getting $18 million from this city. Why? For what? Take some of that money, even if you take half of it, even if you divide it by eight and if the other council members want to donate their district share to Valley Metro, they can. But there's a lot we can do in South Phoenix to beautify the streets. You heard people talk about lighting, talking about streetlights. You go down Central, there's no shade, we could have ficus trees or natural desert trees. You talk about, our medians look like crap. They're half-dead. We don't even get our Christmas wreaths and stuff we used to get on South Central. Used to say Merry Christmas. We don't even get that. So, please, if you go to vote for the train, listen to the people, give them four lanes, figure it out. But if you decide that perhaps the train isn't as important there as some of these people think it is, just remember that you've got a fifth of a billion dollars. You have $200 million and potentially 18 million more every year after that lump sum to give South Phoenix streets that would be the envy of America, buses that would be the envy of America, a dash system for our seniors to get them to the grocery store that would be the envy of America. And I want to make one final point and I promise I'll stop. The light rail contracting, if it is reflective of the way they have behaved thus far, then African-Americans and Latinos and poor whites in South Phoenix can't expect a single job or economic infusion from them if they conduct themselves this way when it's contracting time and local hiring time, then we don't have anything to look forward to. But the city of Phoenix, and it's interesting to see Sal and Jim on this issue because I know they're Republicans and they're not for big government giveaways, but the train is the biggest boondoggle of them all. So if you, if you really want to help the people that live where I live, take the $200 million, Jim, listen to me, man, and Sal if you're listening, and Michael, and Ms. Stark and Kate if you're there, and Mayor Williams, listen to me. Our people are hungry, they're hurting, they're struggling to pay rent, they're struggling to pay their bills. Take our kids that are learning concrete and masonry trades and put them to work building their sidewalks again. Go over and talk to Reverend Black and some of the black ministers in our community that do rebar work and construction work and demolition jobs. Put them to work paving our streets, building our sidewalks, planting the trees, we've got a ton of nurseries on the south side that could use the money. Help us to rebuild our community, you got $200 million to do it because north and south on Central is what matters. It's north and south on Central, 7th Avenue, 7th Street, 19th Avenue, 16th Street, 24th Street, 35th Avenue, 51st Avenue, 32nd Street, and then east and west on Broadway and Rosier and Southern and Baseline and all those places. So it's a lot more than just Central and you got a fifth of a billion dollars to do it, so do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, please. Patrick Brennan. Patrick Brennan. Okay, Gary P-U-L-S-I-P-H-A-R. Pulcifer?
Yep, hi, good evening. My name is Gary Pulcifer and I'm a practicing dentist on South Central and I've been there for about 30 years and I'm also a property owner. And my dad was a dentist and he also was in the area from 1955, he went down there at request of the state board because the area was in need of services. For over 60 years, we practiced dentistry and done our best to be faithful and honest with the people in South Phoenix. Throughout this process, you know, or during it, I had a law firm contact me and the law firm in the process of having this discussion, well, toward the end of it, they essentially, well, they represented the businesses that the light rail ran along into Mesa. And so at the end of the discussion, I asked them, based on what you know, having represented the community in Mesa and all the businesses along the light rail there, what would you recommend as a business owner? What should I do? And they essentially said leave. So, my, it seems to me like the, like what was mentioned earlier with McDonald's and the ranch market, the people with the greater resources see the writing on the wall. And what happens to the tax revenues of these businesses that you are forcing, forcing to leave or hurting the businesses essentially? You can't make the assumption that these businesses are going to want to come in and bigger and greater businesses are going to have a greater tax revenue, that may not happen. And we've heard that over and over again. But anyway, to make it short, it seems to me like if we look at the community and listen to what's being said tonight, why don't we all consider the fact that maybe four lanes would be a good idea? And maybe you can have your money and get excited about it and, and at the same time, the people here, I think, would, you'd have swatched their feelings if you would essentially compensate the business owners for what they, what they really, really are losing and that's loss of business and property value in my opinion and based on what I see, based on what the ranch market sees, McDonald's owner sees, they know, they know that it's not good and they know it's coming. So why don't you just use some of this money, compensate the businesses fairly, give them four lanes and everybody's happy.
Thank you. Mariette Moore, followed by Angelita Frosto. Mary Ann? Angelita? Followed by Daniel Shipley.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Angelita Frosto and I am a resident of South Phoenix for about 46 years. Also, I am the chairperson for our Fight Back, which is from Southern to Baseline, from 7th Avenue to Central. I have talked to quite a bit of the people in my neighborhood there and they all are against the light rail. Mostly because of the two lanes, also because a lot of people that live there in that community, in that area are elderly people. They are afraid that their taxes will go up. Also, during our Fight Back, we would like to thank the city police department for helping us clean up of the neighborhoods there for crime, for homeless, and for also for people that are just hangs around there. That is one of the things that the people are afraid of, that it would come back to our neighborhoods. I also asked about the Central Bridge. They said that there is, they could not build another bridge on Central, it would be only the bridge there. We wanted to find out and we, I did meet and other people met with Valley Metro and they told us, well, how is it going to be possible for the train to go down Central Bridge and have lanes of two lanes? They said that Central Bridge would be reinforced. I don't know how they would do that. I also had heard about the closing of the I-17 Bridge and, but like I said, a lot of people in my neighborhood are against the two lanes and they also worry about the businesses on Central. And another thing in our neighborhood, we would have problems with the traffic because as it is on 7th Avenue right now, there's a lot of traffic on Cent, on Southern. Right now, what we have been fighting for, for the last 10 years, is to have on 7th Avenue and Southern four-way turning signals. And can you imagine the traffic now there is bad? You have to sit there at least three to four stops before you can even make a left-hand turn there. And if they start building the light rail, traffic there is going to be horrible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Shipley and Conia Jackson.
Gentlemen, ladies, thank you very much. A couple of things I'd like to mention is, first of all, yes, it is a fact that the light rail was voted for, but two high-ranking officials who are going to remain unnamed as part of the Phoenix government has admitted that there's basically been a bait and switch. We voted for one version, it went through several incarnations, and now we have the two-lane version. And when we complain about it, we're told, well, you voted for it. That's great, we voted for one, not the other. You know, another thing is, and you know, you try to speak about, you know, gentrification and preserving the history and the culture of the south side. However, the south side, a large part of it is the traditional small businesses that have existed there, that's been passed down generation through generation. And the crushing effect that this is going to have on those small businesses will kill them and replace it with the cold indifference of the big box stores. This is a proven fact in the areas where the light rail has come through. So, when me and many others lose our jobs, when we, who work at small businesses, is Metro or the city of Phoenix going to give us jobs? Is that factored into the budget? Also, there's no need for another form of mass transit. The bus line can't even be fully utilized. For a year, I rode the bus from Central and Dobbins down to Donlap and Third, no three transitions, it's a straight shot. Did it for every day. I didn't sit anything sticky, I was never mugged, nothing bad ever happened to me. I'm just a skinny white guy and if nothing bad happens to me on the south side on the bus, chances are nothing's really going to happen to anybody else. As far as, as far as emergency vehicles, you know, great, it's a theory that there's going to be plenty of room for it to pass through. But it's also a well-known fact, thank you very much, that when dealing with the government and their projects, reality is often very different from what theory is. So, okay, well, give me just one more second. I'll wrap it up real quick. So, as far as, it's been also a proven fact because a former member of the Phoenix Police has repeatedly confirmed that the light rail does bring crime and homelessness. Those same two high-ranking city officials I spoke to told me that there's an increase in aggressive behavior by the homeless. So bringing more of them to the south side, how is that improving it? Also, Mesa, yes, I grew up in Mesa, was a good place to live, but since the light rail came in, it is now the methamphetamine capital of Arizona. Two more points. I'd like to know how many people wearing the Save South Central shirts live south of the bridge and will utilize the light rail? I'm not talking about 100 South Central. Also, my last point, the pro-light rail people love to patronize people with the just wait 20 to 30 years over everyone's heads. We don't have to wait that long. The boarded-up small businesses and which transient sleep in those areas where the plague of the light rail has passed through speaks volumes to the vitalizing effects of this light rail. If you want stuff to do, parks, road maintenance, trees, gardens, zero escaping, tech, bring tech jobs, bring tech industry in, that will vitalize the area, cause it to grow, bring new money in, and thus flourish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy, Tracy Gomez, Tracy Gomez got skipped. Sorry. And then, I don't know if it's, Cania Jackson, Conia Jackson? Follows you. You're Tracy.
I am, yes. Someone else put a card in for me to speak with, for them also, just, I won't go over that, so. Good afternoon, or night, Mayor and Council members. My name's Tracy Gomez and I'm a former employee of RPTA, back in the Kendrigs, Day Boggs, Steve Banta, and I must add Brian Youngworth era. I stand here before you with concerns about how the South Central extension was passed. I only have a few minutes, so I won't dwell on these so-called 380 public meetings, 20,000 door hangers, surveys, possibly open meeting laws, and how they count meetings into this equation. How their contracted advertising company does their actual studies. But I will ask if this team, I think Scott Smith had stated that there was a team of engineers, and I think you had mentioned it in regards to the maintaining the four lanes would be possible in some areas of the six-mile strip, if that was done, you had mentioned that as well, so we have, he need to look at, look that up. Also, I wanted to ask if there are any District 8 representatives on the Citizens Transportation Committee?
Patrick Brennan.
Patrick is District 8?
I think every district gets one, so we have one.
Okay, do you know who, who appointed him?
Each council member gets one, so I as the District 8 council member appointed him.
Okay, because I saw on there, ex-mayor appointed a lot of them, so I have to look into that as well. Also, who's on the Citizen Committee T-2050? The concurrent project activity transportation, the 2050?
You mean the Citizens Transit Commission?
Yeah, the T, what is it?
ETC.
Is there a list of who's on that?
I don't know if we have one here, but we can give one for you.
Great. I also ask that you reference the summary minutes that were also brought up as well from Phoenix City Council Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee Item 8, South Central Transit Oriented Development Business Assistance and Land Use Planning Services Grant. Items were promised to some of you and not honored. For example, Representation of Promise Arizona stated the team had been doing work in the community for years and stated that the work entailed working with each business and bringing back a plan. And as you'll hear from the business owners that have stepped forward and wanted to be heard, sent in emails, maybe made calls, that wasn't done. One councilwoman also wanted to ensure security and safety. Hopefully, that includes the SSPP, which is a System Safety Program Plan. The representative also stated that South Central Phoenix had the highest ridership in the city. But Mr. Smith himself stated that 19th Ave extension maintained four lanes because it's far greater than that traffic on Central Avenue. Yet with their word to provide these things, there was a motion passed right then. There are too many holes in this. This is a 35-year plan, I think, and we're asking for 90 days.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
This, I don't know, K-N-O-Y-I? Jackson? Sorry, handwriting's a little difficult, I'm not sure I'm reading it right. Officer Mother? Okay. George Vasquez? Followed by John, and he says he's in the overflow area, Montelevo?
And while George comes down, Gail Knight is also on the Citizens Transportation Commission representing education and lives in District 8.
Good evening, my name is George Vasquez, co-owner of Poncho the Mexican Food. I'd like to thank the city council for allowing the listening session, really, it's been kind of interesting for everybody, I think. But coming in, I kind of had some thoughts already, but even being here, a lot of those thoughts have been confirmed, both from logistics and informational. What I would like to share today, my concern, I definitely, by the way, I am opposed to the light rail. The reasons, I can go on and on and on. I don't like what I even came thinking and then what I've heard. I don't like the lack of transparency, I don't like the deceptiveness which affects the timing. As you heard today, I'm going, well, how did this all start? How did this all start? How did we get to light rail? What happened with our buses? You start looking into reports and you're going, well, what is, because I never got anything, like so many of you people have also mentioned today, I didn't get notices. We've been here 45 years. I'm not there at the restaurant every day, but I do get there often enough to get my mail. But I'm going, well, how did this all start? How did we end up with light rail? Could have been buses, yeah. So you start reading a few reports, true or false, I'm hoping they're true. true or false, I'm hoping they're true, and you're going, well, what is this LPA? What's this local preferred alternative? And what is it? Well, it's the Citizens Transportation Commission. So I guess that's the committee that makes the decision whether we're going to go light rail, buses, streetcars, whatever. So I'm saying, okay, I'm going to start right there. So I start right there, and I'm thinking, okay, so who picks this committee? Are they voted on? Well, it turns out, some of them are elected and selected by Metro Rail. Okay? I'm going, well, that's a little funny. That's a little strange. But I'm going to go with it. I didn't like, after the 45 years, we've spent, we've been through a lot. We've been through the 1970s widening, watching 15 or 18 businesses not make it. That wasn't fun. But we also can't ignore, sit here and say like it didn't happen in Glendale. And I think I have, I think I emailed the council, council members, the findings on the Glendale. They voted and approved their light rail in 2001. They rejected it October of 2017. 16 years passed. And I got a feeling, there's a little bit of research, fact-finding, everything that went along with that in order to make that decision, because I'm sure Metro Rail wasn't very happy with it, to the tune of about 2.9 million of investment. A few of the members weren't happy with it, couldn't believe it got turned down. But it did get turned down. And you read further, you say, well, how did it get turned down? Why did it get turned down? The Glendale Center Line, Over Line, Overlay District. It was from 43rd Avenue to 67th Avenue. Well, after a lot of thinking about it, and they looked into it, 16 years later, oh, I'm sorry. Was that me?
No, I'm, I'm asking him to wrap up.
Okay, I'll try to hurry up. 16, well, 16 years later, you know, they didn't have the development. They didn't have the entertainment district. They didn't have so many things, and they knew they could not obligate their debt on that light rail. So, and I'm thinking, well, where are we on this thing? I don't know that we're that much better, because 45 years down there, and I love, I love my South Phoenix community. Don't not get me wrong. I love it. Every bit of it. It's been, it's been very good to us. I love it. We try to return the, the effort to our valued customers. However, I'm going, well, wait a minute. Why would I want to have a new Cadillac brought down the middle of Central Avenue to baseline to look at what? Look at what? I haven't seen the street improved. I don't see any sidewalks. I don't see lights, and these have all been mentioned earlier, I know. I don't see landscaping. How about a few pavers? How about another lane on baseline coming in from east or west so people can get home earlier instead of being in waiting traffic? How about another lane on baseline? We can go on and on with that 200 million the gentleman had mentioned before. Well, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't come to that, but we're talking about bringing this new Cadillac down the street, but we have nothing to show it. I wish, you know, not trying to be funny, but I wish our tacos were that good. But I don't think they're that good.
Please wrap up.
Okay. Anyway, it was the amenities. They didn't have the infrastructure. They didn't have the things necessary for it. First year, 2023, operating cost in 2023 is going to be 20, just shy of $21 million. Just the operating cost. Daily linked trips. And I don't know what daily linked trips are. I don't know if I have to station to station to station. But I will tell you one thing. When I look out that window at Poncho's, through the takeout window, I can look out there just about any time I want and see max of three or four people getting out of that bus.
Please.
Okay. Anyway, again, I'm going to, I'm going to side, and I'm going to go with the thing that's been said here so many times today, this evening, this afternoon. Were we contacted? No. Did I have contact? 45 years there. Have I been contacted? No. My first one-on-one session, January of 2018. April, I had my property being surveyed. That's not good. This big of an item, costly of an item? How is it going to affect property owners on South Central? You know what? Bottom line to me, from what I see, Glendale was in their process of their tenure. We, whether it happens or not, will be impacted. Whether this thing goes down or not, we're not ready. And what we need is a leadership crew. Somebody get Metro people, whoever it is. Let's get on this thing, get on the board right, and hopefully just get it going forward. I'm not saying good or bad, if it's going to happen or not, but let's get it going. But right now is not the time to be doing this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Siprino Miranda? And then Mary Walker.
I'm a little tall, so I got to make sure I get the mic right. All right, council members. Some of you may know me. Some of you in the audience may know me. My name is Siprino Mianda. I am running for the Arizona State Senate here for District 27. And the current state senator is my aunt through marriage, through my uncle Ben Mianda, Catherine Mianda. And I just got to say it outright. We are against the light rail. No one told my aunt, who is a current state senator... I'm sorry?
No, I was asking him to be courtesy to you.
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
And the whole thing about it was nobody told my aunt, who is a current state senator of District 27, about the light rail. She found out probably two, three weeks later about it. No one contacted the House members, Rebecca Rios, or Reginald Bolden about this. So there is a lack of transparency. So all this money that's going into the light rail could have went for opioid crisis that's going on in South Phoenix that can go on for education, like this whole Red for Ed movement, for teacher salaries, for students who have books that are broken, that are out of date. You can have, for businesses, like why do a lot of people from South Phoenix have to travel to Tempe, to Mesa, or Scottsdale for jobs that pay a little bit better than they do in South Phoenix? Now, you're hurting the businesses, Pete's, Poncho's, and all that stuff. You're destroying economic security right there for those business owners. So that's not creating anything. You're just doing what you want to do. You're not putting the people's agendas first. You're putting your own agendas first. And I'm not a spring chicken to this. I know the rules. Like I said, I know about all this politics games and everything like that. How about we fix the potholes? I've been trying to get a pothole filled in my street for two years now. The city says, well, you give us $500, we'll go down there and do it for you. $500? But Mason and Scottsdale can do that? They go around and redo the signs. Our signs are down. We need speed bumps. And that's just not right. How can you do that? All right, so, I am on my time. Thank you so much.
Mary Walker. And then Dolan Dassinger.
Hi, thank you. I'm Don Dassinger, Phoenix, Arizona. 13th Avenue and Southern. Never heard anything about this, except, as I understand, it's been rapidly accelerated January to April. That's a very short timeframe for business. I was seeing that perhaps Jim Waring would give some of the crime statistics of the 19th Avenue, because I also see that that would be what we're being gifted with. So, no, thank you. Going down from four lanes to two lanes, nonsensical. Going from the ability to have a fire truck block police or hazardous material situation, there's reasons to keep the lanes, not to restrict them, even if there's some agenda for the reduction or restriction or discouragement of free transit, free choices in your transit. Which means, for me, I drive along the route. I go over to Southern. I usually go up 7th Avenue, but sometimes I go up Central from Southern. I drive along it on Washington. I see one apartment on, that was built up really nicely next to a stop at 7th Street in Washington, or Jefferson. And there are several things that have happened in the other direction on Jefferson, on Jefferson, and then also more on Washington. But it's not the panacea that people think of. I think it is a risk, and buses can do the job very well. And if there is need for a detour, the bus goes around whatever problem there is, and continues the route. Train, that's just, by the way, a non-starter right there. That is, why build with old technology? And then if forced into a train because of this greediness, which is a national phenomenon of Texas trying to take everybody else's money, and Arizona, now we have a chance to try and take everybody else's money for foolish things when we really need to look at the long-term infrastructure problems. And I had some handouts, but not five of them for, there are 3% of our bridges are failing and needing repairs. Why are any of our bridges in Arizona? There's people in Kingman and other areas need money too. This is like Rome down here, trying to take money and then burden us with the maintenance costs of it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Richard Hutchinson. Followed by, I think it's Cynthia Estia? Estlia?
Hi, I'm Richard Hutchinson. Longtime resident of South Phoenix, over 50 years. In fact, the phone number on this phone was my phone number 50 years ago. Gary Pulsifer is my dentist. And I think your tacos are pretty good down there at Poncho's. One of the things that concerns me about this is that, while I like riding on the light rail, I jump on the light rail to go to ASU games. I do not like shopping along the light rail. Because if you're trying to get into a business that's somewhere along the light rail, odds are that you're going to have to go down, wait for opportunity to make a U-turn, come back. You know, that's a problem. And that's when we're, when you're dealing with four lanes. Imagine doing that with two lanes. That's not a very good idea. It's not going to be conducive to those businesses that I, that I have been patronizing there on South, on South Central all of my life. There've been talk about, well, what about the money that we've already spent? My dad's passed away, but he was a really good poker player. And one of the things he taught me, he says, this is the number one rule of poker. Don't throw any good money after bad. That's bad money. Let's just throw, let's let it go. Let's not throw more good money after it. The $600, 600 million in federal money? Oh, that's nice, $600 million. But that's not going to end up in South Phoenix. That's going to end up in the contractors that work on that. That's not, that's not South Phoenix money. I'm a high school economics teacher. I understand how that works. None of that money's going to come to South Phoenix. What's going to come to South Phoenix are the problems that come with the light rail. We've heard about people talk about what we don't have in South Phoenix. I'm not concerned about what we don't have in South Phoenix. I'm concerned about what we have in South Phoenix. We have a community in South Phoenix. We have small businesses. We have businessmen who have built their lives around those businesses in South Phoenix. And now you want to put a train down the middle of their street, cut off their access to their customers, and put them out of business? For what? So we can claim $600 million? For a boondoggle? I'm sorry. This is just not a good idea. And one last note. Understand that everybody who is here is committed to this. And if you vote for this, everybody who is here is not going to forget. This isn't an issue that's going to go away, because you're going to build that thing, and it's going to block the roads. It's going to, every time we drive down Central Avenue, we are going to curse your name. And we're going to talk in our churches, and we're going to talk in our schools, and we're going to talk in our neighborhoods, and we're going to talk to our friends in other parts of the city. A number of years ago, I sat in the living room with Terry Goddard at his home as we planned on how to change this city government so that we had representation. We have that representation now. And the reason we did it was because if you chose not to represent us, we could choose not to have you here.
Thank you.
And these people will work not to have you here.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, may I, may I interject here if I could just quickly? Mayor?
Oh, yeah, it's Councilman, is this you? I didn't know you were on the phone.
No, I've been doing the whole thing online. And this individual here could not have summed it up better. Their entire community is being victimized by politicians and by bureaucrats at the city of Phoenix. They are totally screwing these people over. This has all been nothing but BS what's been occurring here at the city of Phoenix. This entire hearing has been nothing but a sham. It has been a sham, because, you know what, folks? Nobody's going to do anything for you. They're not going to do anything. You have to do it on yourself. You're going to have to get out there, and you're going to have to get in the trenches. And you're going to have to do this, because the politicians will not protect you. The city of Phoenix politicians have lied to you. They have done everything they can. The city manager in particular has done nothing but lie to you. He is a liar. And he will do whatever he can to attack you. And he will go after you. And this hearing has nothing been, been nothing but a sham on these poor people. I've watched the whole thing. And these people have already made up their minds. They're not going to give you the time you need in order to protect yourself. They're just not going to do that. They're going to come back and say, oh, we can't do this because we've got to make this decision by July? It's been nothing but a scam. They have lied to me. They have not provided me the information that I needed. So what makes you think they're going to provide you the information that you need? Because if they lie to me, they will lie to you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we have four more cards. Cynthia? She's gone. Ashley, I have two Ashleys in a row.
Hello, my name is Ashley Merida, and I live in South Phoenix on Central and Dobbins. Yesterday, me and my best friend Ashley Avila went to Camelback and 19th Avenue where we rode the light rail. I used to ride the light rail in high school, and I hated it because I got sexually harassed all the time. It's been five years since I graduated, and I wanted to go back to see if it was still the same thing. Within three minutes, we were sexually harassed by a man taunting us, saying, keep on going, keep on ignoring me. You guys are so pretty. And then he even moved over seats to try touching one of us. I have pictures here, I don't know if the camera can see, but of several homeless people in the light rail. There was a homeless person in front of me, next to me, which was the one that was harassing us. And then I have a video of the man harassing us as well. And if you go down to the light rail, there's trash everywhere. The seats are disgusting. It smells like pee, to the point where I felt dirty coming out. I felt like I was inside of a box surrounded by perverts in all reality. When you are in a bus, you have somebody there at all times, watching, surveilling. They can stop the bus at any time and kick them out. The difference with the light rail is that while we were there, we had no security, no security there. You say that the tickets are going to come back to the community. The people paying the $2 is going to help us. But in reality, there are so many people riding the light rail for free. How is that going to benefit South Phoenix? We were never checked. There was no security there. We are spending $160 million per mile for construction. That can be used for something else. I ask for you to please consider for a 90-day pause so that we can come up with a solution. Two-way, a two-way lane is not going to work out for us, and a four-way lane is not going to work out, because that's going to be putting out businesses like Pete's, Poncho's, Food City, and all of our local businesses. of our local businesses. I also wanted to clarify and say that we shop in South Phoenix because we love South Phoenix. We love our local businesses. It is not because we do not have a way to get to Tempe or Scottsdale. We are South Phoenix, and we wanna stay South Phoenix, not go to anything else. Another thing is the EMS and drowning. I just graduated as a registered nurse, and we have so many children coming into the hospital for drowning. Is this light rail going to be putting extra minutes to arrive for a four-year-old drowning? Is this four-year-old gonna drown because the EMS didn't get there in time? I understand that we have that. Yes, I will. I understand that we're supposed to pull over to the side, but daily, on the daily, I see drivers not knowing what to do, not pulling over to the side. Can you imagine what that's gonna do for these life and death situations for these children and people with stroke and heart attack? I just ask to please put a 90-day hold and reconsider using this for a rapid bus, or if not, putting it on the 24th Street where there's enough room to make it four lanes, and it's not gonna impact any houses or any local businesses. Thank you.
Ashley?
Hello, Mayor, City Councilman, it's really nice to be able to have the opportunity to speak on this issue. I've lived in South Phoenix my whole life. I'm 23 years old. I go shop at the local businesses such as Food City, I go to the restaurants on South Central. Again, it is by choice. I feel that the light rail does not need to be on Central. We understand that we're not gonna get exactly what we want as to not having a light rail at all, but at least to consider the possibility of putting it on a street where it makes more sense, like 24th Street. There just isn't enough people riding local transportation as it is on Central Avenue. I ride the bus pretty frequently, and we get to see there's not really many people there. And we'd have to lose all of our local businesses, and you know, those are things that contribute to the culture of South Phoenix, which we definitely don't wanna lose our culture. We wanna make sure that we're all able to stay in our homes, be able to keep our local businesses. That way, we can share that with future generations going forward. I just really wanna make sure that it's kept in mind that this is affecting our culture as well. So it's not something that's just, there's a lot of crime, everyone has touched on that, but this is also interfering with the culture of South Phoenix. So I really hope you do keep that in mind, and thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Last card, I believe the last name is Sanchez, lives on Riverside Street.
He left.
He left. Okay. No, no, we're done.
I felt that hard. I felt...
I am very fortunate that I have had people stay this long. Is everybody willing to stay longer?
They're sure they want to.
Please, I'm asking council members if they're willing to stay, because this was posting it from, it would be over at 5:00. Okay.
You mean five hours?
Yeah, I guess five hours, but I don't have any more cards that say they wanna speak. Well, please state your name.
Yes.
And address for the record.
My name is Lucas Nieri. I'm an architect and urban planner. I'm from a city well-known and world-famous of mass transit and urban planning. I'm from Curitiba, Brazil. And I know a lot about the process of analyzing the needs of transportation and development. One of the key elements, I'll be very short, please, is to have consideration on zoning, land use, and also mass transportation. Now, mass transit, we cannot just use a light rail over bus rapid transit or street car. You have to analyze by the community. You have to make researches that it's possible to feed on the land use. For example, bus rapid transit can go to use for fire trucks, for ambulances, and police cars that can cross over all town in less than eight minutes. So light rail doesn't have this possibility. Also, there's modes of buses. They're wider and they're smaller. There are even buses that, you know, they make no sound at all, and at the same time, they're driverless. So I believe at this point, this community needs an answer, much better analyzed by all the institutions involved in this process. And that's what I really would like to mention about this. And I first came here in 1999 to be hired by Maricopa County Department of Transportation to develop analysis on corridors for mass transit. And I would like to share some of the information with the council members.
Okay.
Please.
Chris, can you go get the information? I need you to wrap up, sir.
I appreciate it very much, and I hope you guys come up with a very good solution for all these people that needs services and also transportation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you so much for hearing us out. And I wanna thank the audience. Thank you all for, we've been here five hours, as you have, almost five hours, and we've tolerated and waited and listened patiently to everyone because this is so important. It's so important because we're still here, sitting here, waiting to be heard. Obviously, there is something wrong. Obviously, this light rail project cannot go on as planned. This is outrageous, the comments that everyone has made, the lack of transparency, the misinformation that we've gotten, and some people haven't gotten any information. So it's not fair. I voted for the light rail. I marked the neutral box, because I voted for the light rail. I believe in economic progress. I want Roosevelt, I mean Roosevelt, I want South Phoenix to be improved. I want it to be beautified and have better things for our community, but not when we're being just shoved down our throats, something that no one is being honest about. So I ask that you do the 90-day extension. If you're not gonna vote it down tomorrow, we need to come to the table again. Every single person here has a right to come to this table. We can use this table that you have here, so that everyone can sit down and everyone can be listened to as to what is it that we want in our light rail project. And that's all I have to say, and I thank you again for being here and waiting us out. Thank you. You are the gentleman behind you, either one, either way.
Did you, please go gentleman first.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and City Council members, I'm Gene Holmerud. I've been living at 16th Street near South Mountain Avenue since about 1984. And thanks to my councilwoman, Diego, I've been serving on the village planning committee. However, I'm not in any way representing the committee, I am here for myself. Ms. Hyatt over here, she picked me, a picture of me and my bicycle standing on a light rail train before they were in service, and it was on the safety panel that was first given out to bicycle users of light rail. I am in favor of a rail solution to South Mountain's transportation. And I was quite vocal about nine, four, and five years ago during the alternatives phase. Now, it's been mentioned on some of the slides, the alternatives were bus rapid transit, modern street car, and the light rail, light rail being what we have in the rest of the valley. Modern street car has been adopted by, yeah, Tempe is building it, Tucson has a system, other cities around the United States, Dallas right now is building one. The advantage of modern street car is that they don't steal a lane. When the alternatives were presented, I heard somebody saying, gee, you can drive on the light rail tracks. Right. I was on the board of the Arizona Operation Lifesaver, which is the rail industry's public safety program. You know, the people that say, the crossing lights and the flashing lights and the crossing each are there for a reason, because about every three hours, somebody in the United States finds out the hard way. Okay, I passed that on to another board member, another board member who happened to be the rail safety officer of light rail. We never heard about it again. So some misrepresentation. I think we need to consider it. It's not going to steal a traffic lane, and we can have four lanes of traffic, cars, trucks, buses, can use all four lanes. The modern street cars will use one lane.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much. Diane?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Diane Barker. I live in District 7. And let me just tell you a little bit about my experience and how I grew to love South Phoenix. And I've never spoken with anybody who told me they didn't really like or love living in South Phoenix. And then I'll let you know what I'm supporting. I came here without a car 30 years ago. I was a real estate agent, I had cars. And I was living in Tempe, and I got jobs as a girl Friday. And I got on the wrong bus. I ended up in South Phoenix. And it was scary because I needed to get back to Tempe. I had no one to call to help me if I got stranded. It was before the internet or anything. And I got off in a warehouse district, there were very little lights. Two guys got off with me, it was dark, and I had one bus to get home. And there I'm waiting and waiting, and all of, I'm getting scared. I don't carry weapons or anything. And the lights of the bus came, and I'm like, God, this is the bus that's taking me home. Okay, so now we are here, at first on my card, I didn't point that I was supporting anything, because I wanted to hear from you. I am so happy that South Phoenix has a voice on this. And I'm hearing it, and I wanna hear more of it. But the point of it is, is that this, after hearing you, I can't support this, because this isn't the right solution for your transit. You need transit, and you should be the hallmark. You have been using transit more than anybody in the valley. You're the leaders of the future of transit. You need the very best stations, you need the best transport to take you, not only in Phoenix, but your jobs, and school, other places. This is at grade, the process is flawed, it's at Congress. United States Congress is to blame for this. It's not unlike 60 Minutes. What happened is the DOG is going from those jobs to the drug companies they were supposed to regulate. It's all about money on this. The FTA attorneys, and I will clear it up, you need to know this, the FTA attorneys go to the bonds people, because this is about an income stream, and they bond the thing, then they're grueling just to get the vehicles on. You need flexible transportation, and that is the bus system first, then get some trains, okay?
Thank you. I wanna take all of your...
Hello, my name is Valerie Smith, and I'm not related to Scott Smith. I have been riding the bus since I was nine years old. Me and my friend would go from South Phoenix all the way to Chris Town Mall on the bus. Back then, the bus stops were at the end of the street, not in the middle of the block. There was seating, there was shade. We don't have that anymore. I would not want any little kid riding the train by themselves, but I do see little kids on the bus. On the bus, there's a driver. If there's some kind of problem, they can pull over. On the train, the driver's way up there, you never see the driver. We do not need the train down South Central, but we're willing to compromise with four lanes. My dad has been in business on South Central and Victory Street. He's been there 59 years in business. One day, my sister is pulling out of Victory onto Central. One of the police officers that come out of that big police station where there's hundreds and hundreds of police officers, she's pulling out, he comes, and he T-bones my sister. Now they're gonna put a roundabout in there, so the big semi trucks pulling 40-foot trailers delivering metal to my dad's business and to the other business, it's gonna be a roundabout. You're gonna be having, you're gonna be having cars, you're gonna be having semis, you're gonna be having the motorcycle police officers coming out, you're gonna be having the cars and the police cars coming out of there, and it's gonna be a roundabout right there. It's gonna be like a chicken fight going around in there. I just think that this is a bad idea. Every day, I go to Food City, every day, I go to Poncho's, every day, I go to Ace Hardware, every day, I go to Family Dollar. Sometimes, I eat at the pizza place next to my house, Little Caesar's. But I will rarely ride the train, because I would have to get on the train and then get back off and get on a bus wherever I would go. I would ride the bus always. We don't need the train down there. We need more buses, but no more trains.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John?
Madam Mayor, Honorable Council Members, it's pretty neat to see that there's a sitting mayor, a former mayor, Mayor Smith, and myself, a former mayor of small community. And as mayors, you understand that you listen to your constituency first, because they elect you. You're not there until they put you there. So as a veteran, outspoken veteran, as you know, I can only say this. Everybody here voted for that 400. Everybody here has a piece of the pie, because you voted to tax yourself. There is no South, Central, or North, and this is Phoenix. Don't separate yourselves, because you're Phoenicians, all of you. This tax, you voted upon yourself, all right? I paid for that too. From the North, from the Central, everybody pays for this tax, not just South Phoenix, everybody. So in that discussion, I seen these individuals wearing Save South Central. Yes, and definitely Save South Central. You're Phoenicians. Do you remember what that means, Phoenicians? To rise from the ashes and to grow again from the fire, right? Don't put yourselves all in a kettle of fire. Work together as one, you're in the same city. Work as a group. There used to be a time when the tracks did separate South Phoenix to North City. The river did separate us, I remember that. Somebody said about cruising South Central. I remember that, I did that as a kid, but it doesn't exist no more. We're together as a city. The same thing that you must bring upon yourselves, you must hold your staff accountable. A lot has been said about meetings that did or did not happen. You just passed a contract giving Promise Arizona that same responsibility to do so. So I think that Promise Arizona, PAC, should implement some kind of policy to provide before you for these individuals to be asked and informed on. And if it means a call center to make sure all of South Phoenix is called and made aware of meetings or dispositions or council website for the specific purpose, I suggest you do so, because apparently, maybe it didn't happen the way it should have the last time. This is not really about separating yourselves as a community. This is bringing yourself together as a community to make something happen, whether it be four lanes, or whether it be the light rail, whatever the case is, this is the fifth-largest city in the United States, the greatest country in this world. And you know what? This hat right here on my head says that, because there's blood on my hands for this country. Is there blood on your hands for this country where you sit in this seat right now? Do you get up and do you go to work or whatever, because another country is not telling you what to do, because of the people who wear this hat or wore a uniform? Remember that first. Other people gave you these freedoms, right? Land of the free because of the brave, right? But they support all of you. When they wear that uniform, there's not a black or white or anything. No, no, no. That's my brother and sister in arms, and she's got my back or he's got my back. That's all that matters, all right? So let's learn from this. Let's come together as one. Let's not try to separate each other as individuals for what you don't know or what you need to know. Promise Arizona has been contracted to make sure you know that. $2 million they're being paid. Make sure they earn their money. Make sure the city council, and this, I'm gonna, just one more minute, this city council is changing. The mayor resigned, the older Williams is a very good person, very good mayor, but in March, you'll have a new mayor and new council. March, that's not too far away, right? So come together as a community. Come together, those men and women who come together to serve for you, to keep you free, all right? Do that. I thank you, Mayor and Honorable Council, for giving this veteran this time, and your staff for providing it, and you, Phoenicians, for making sure that your voice is heard. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your words. Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else? This is the last call. All right. Here, you're seeing no one. I want to tell you, we will have this on the agenda tomorrow. I do not plan to have this type of length of testimony tomorrow. If you have a spokesperson, one, who can, you can identify a pro and a con, I would greatly appreciate it because I am quite sure I would never keep council members here that long again. And I want to say thank you to the council members who have sit here, who have been on the phone. I believe very strongly that we have listened. We understand where you're coming from, and that will all be considered in our decision tomorrow. But have a safe trip home, and thank you for being here. Meetings adjourned.